Port pass six. Obviously, the first item is evacuation procedure. A fire build is not expected to alarm sound, please evacuate the building quickly and calmly. Please use the stairs and do not use the lift. Once outside the building, please gather outside Yorkshire Bank on opposite side of the road. Exit by the door which you entered the room or by the fire exits which are clearly indicated by the standard green traffic, air traffic, fire exits end. Need any assistance evacuating the building, please let yourself know inter member of staff. Please also make sure your mobile phones are turned off or set to silent. And this meeting will be recorded for future work tasks. Item number two on the agenda is apologies. I have one apology from Consulor Andy substituted by Consulor Claudia. All right, my very. Third item is declaration of interest. I'm not on the schedule.
Chair, I'd like to declare on the chair of the Volksmaan Village Residents' Association because I need to bring something up this in the record.
Okay. Anybody else? Consulor Panda?
I have already talked for two times, I'm not a member of the press, but they still keep on adding on there, so I was just...
All right with that? The non-interessor party were right on. What I intend to do here is I intend to go to the partner, the minutes, let's say, the objects of scrutiny, to write the panel with information from the ground maintenance contract, Glendale Ground Maintenance Manager. The panel will be asked to consider, which I think we'll have to vote on to see whether we're going to consider it or not, that members of the panel will be asked to consider the information in the report relating to the management slash monitoring of ground maintenance contract. If I move that, can find a second place so we can discuss that.
I'll second that, Chair.
Okay, thank you. At this point, I'm going to bring in Paul Daly. And we'll take it from there and then once I, well, shall bring members of the public in afterwards or present the report for pages.
I'm not going to go through every single line of the report because I imagine members have already had the opportunity to look through it. But I was to pick out some salient points, which is quite a fair amount, actually. We last reported to the planning and environment OSB in 29th of March 2018. So everything that's within the report is taken account from that date forward. Taking on board what is requested, the kind of information that was requested by panel at the last meeting, I've tried to cover the majority of those points within the report. In essence, as I was talking about grass cutting operations in late March, that coincided with a very wet, stormy spell of weather which followed us, a lot of snow, and that affected the programme due to the fact that large swag were underwater. And we have, I don't know if you have a lot of evidence in regard to that, taking pictures with their staff when they went to enter onto these soils. This is immediately followed by large temperature rise which caused growth, grass growth to have a tremendous spode. And as members will know, the current contract was written 10 years ago when weather patterns were more stable and predictable. And it is becoming increasingly difficult for the council's contractor to meet the challenges caused by these changes. To illustrate the impact of the change in weather patterns, the diagram that's shown there, which we took from the Agricultural Board, it's off their website, it's live information. It indicates the average grass growth over the last 10 years. Weather patterns are going to be a significant challenge to managing ground maintenance services going forward. And that will be taken account of in any future ground maintenance contract. It's acknowledged that there were and have been a number of operational difficulties with the expected standards not being met in relation to grass cutting and a particular obstacle maintenance being a particular problem. This was an issue not, this was not an issue unique to Nigentland. Many of our neighbouring authorities and authorities further afield had similar problems at this particular time. Council officers have worked with the council's contractor to address the issues related to the excessive grass growth. And a concerted effort was made to ensure the borough was returned to standard as quickly as possible. Currently, the majority of the borough is well within standard and additional work within the cemeteries has addressed concerns in the main raised by members of the public via complaints and on social media. A number of issues were identified, details of which are outlined later in this report. And these issues contributed to the volume of both customer and member inquiries of late, as seen during the summer. The main issues being weed growth in cemetery environments, fairly tiring with grass cuttings, grass growth in itself, weed and grass growth, and the sort of bedding more recently, particularly with the hot weather causing problems with watering. The perceived performance issues encountered during late May and early June culminated a meeting attended by the manager director of Glendale, who's Mike has got to get in here, together with his colleagues, who met with councillor Jackson and Lloyd. And the culmination of this meeting was Glendale put forward a plan for action. I would like to say at this point that they already had a plan in place and they will go through that themselves and they will outline that further to my report. In regard to the monitoring of the contract, and just to put some context, we have in place one full-time contracts officer whose job is to monitor four areas within the borough, which we have approximately 250,000 square metres, so that gives you a little bit of context. And he is one of them, he is currently also with myself looking at writing the contract. So that gives you some idea of the ability that we currently have in regard to monitoring. We have one part-time officer looking at housing areas and probably half his time is looking at general fund, sorry, HRA land at the moment. And we have one half-time officer, because the rest of his time is taken up in trade inquiries, who looks after informal sites. So in any one site, we could have a maximum of two, moreover, one and a half monitoring staff, for an area that covers 500,000 square metres. That gives us some context to the scale of the area that we've got. Glendale Live was raised by members at the last meeting and has been rolled out by Glendale since April. Glendale will, the gentleman here, will outline this in more detail because they have the day-to-day use of it and can explain it in more detail than I. But what it has done and what has allowed us as officers to do is access real-time data. It's been very helpful, it's obviated the need to issue rectifications because we are aware if a member contacts us and says, or a member of the public, if anybody, and says, the grasses are going to be put in this particular location, well, we can see within two days it's going to be done. It saves the need to issue a rectification, which is patently unnecessary. An overview. The monitoring scores for four areas has been consistent through March to March to late. And we've just added Junes for that, unfortunately it was delayed to pull into these figures. But June was 80% based on 25 maintenance visits. And that did include sites where we could score lower than the base, but overall it was 80% in the main. And on informal areas, it was 69, sorry, you can see the scores there, but 69% against the base of 65. So combined, 78 against a range of 75. Customer satisfaction rating, from March through to May, we've only received nine customer satisfaction cards from a distribution of 300. As was agreed by the group in November 17, we are ordering reforms and these will be distributed from July, which will indicate that if they're not returned, blatant as that, but if they're not returned, then we will, they will be counted as being, so we've been satisfied as a service. And that was agreed at the November screening. Monitoring performance is as identified there. March, April and May, and as I said, June, so it's 80% and 72% are informal areas. Some of the rectifications is outlined, March through to July, and broadly in line with a similar amount from the same time last year. Showing a spike in June which met with, or can be attributed certainly to the main to the brass, brass growth and, as described before, with obstacle maintenance. During this period, three defaults have been issued, resulting in more payments of 18 million pounds. Formal complaints, again, this is, I believe, members raise this. We've done a little bit of analysis of the formal complaint system. And April 17 through to March 18 shows the total number of complaints received was 121. Of which 113 were relevant to us. Let's say irrelevant, eight were in the county or could be some other reason. They weren't specifically for Nigentland, so we had to reject them. Of those, 93 were service requests as opposed to complaints. So 27 or 28 of those were deemed a complaint in service or may cause damage or whatever. And of those, 41 were councillor-led. 118, frequency 82, relevant, so maybe all of those are related to ground maintenance. 63 were service requests, 21 being councillor-led. What I've said on the back in regard to counselling inquiries, I do get a number of councillors contacting me via email, telephone, and I meet them. I record those as a counselling inquiry as opposed to a formal complaint. A formal complaint has been made through the customer services department, I'm not a conduit for that. So if a member contacts me, I will not, unless, I'm specifically asked by a member to say, can I class this as a formal complaint? And then councillor Hancock occasionally does that. It will not be classed as a formal complaint, it will be classed as a counselling inquiry and I register it as a formal, as a counselling inquiry. And I'd like to reiterate that point, that if a councillor wishes to make it through their formal complaints system, they need to go through customer services and not the officer. That way it can be logged, it can be, the trail can be followed and I will get a formal response within 10 working days, which is the counter, within 10 working days. We'd like to say the councillor, if a councillor normally contacts me, they get a message in a couple of days. So it depends how you wish to, if you want to escalate something, it depends how you wish that to be dealt with. I've got an hour to add, we'll have that as particular to the chair.
Does, what was requested by the panel, which we bring to a special weekend, was we'd take them one at a time and to report to the panel that addressed the following issues. Glendale performance, effectiveness of contract monitors, including Glendale Live, specific issues in regard to grass cutting, shrub, beds, trees and cemetery maintenance, financial issues including financial pressure of value for money, and clarification on whether the contract has changed. Now, which way do we want to deal with this? Do we want to take these things in isolation? Or shall we get the public involved at the present moment and then, as a panel, take it through a bit more of a tease out the information that the panel has been at? I'm in the panel's hands. Consulor?
Chair, given the lists you've just read out aren't actually provided to us in the documents I can see, I suggest we bring the public straight in. The lists that you've just read out, the relevant sections, I don't think they've been provided to members anywhere. So I think that we just open straight up to the public, Chair.
No, I'm just trying to think, that's what was agreed at the last panel, wasn't it? Also, an update from Glendale to all the current monitor, their contract being monitored. Then an update from the portfolio holder and the contracted performance. And a briefing to the panel detailing the new ground maintenance contract. I thought these were the points that we raised at the last meeting. Consulor?
Chair, at what point in the proceedings are we going to hear from Glendale?
Well, that's what I was trying to say, the points that I've raised there, should we deal with them first? Then an update from Glendale on the current contract, an update from the portfolio holder and a briefing to the panel, then bring the public in, or we want the public to come in at the present, at the current moment. I'm asking to... So should we have some kind of briefing from Glendale on those points or?
Okay, thank you Chair, good evening. Just like to make a couple of overview comments before my colleague Andy runs through some of the salient points. It's my understanding that we produce two reports. One around the time of our first meeting and then an update on progress against that one earlier this week. So if I could just run through, I'd like to pick up particularly something Paul highlighted, which is the independent data within the report, which, to draw your attention specifically to, really, I'm going to deal with both the external and internal factors that have, internal to us, that have resulted in the circumstances to some degree by which we're meeting, by which we're here this evening. We had, as Paul outlined, geared up, based on experience in previous last year, to provide additional resources in order to deal with the anticipated growth patterns with some flexibility in that, that we would reasonably expect. This year, we had somewhat unusual circumstances with a period of late snow, then a period of very wet weather and then it became warm. And at that point, we were in the optimum conditions for grass growth. The wet conditions make it a challenge to actually mow the grass without causing damage in some areas, not in all. But as you can see from the graph, the difference is between this year and last year where the spike comes in much earlier. So that's the external factors that I wanted to highlight. However, I would like to be...
Can I, excuse me, sorry to interrupt.
Of course.
Chair, are we on about the graph on page three?
That's correct.
Chair, can I just ask a question? That is from the Agricultural Board and that is forage for knowledge. Forage for knowledge, that is for farmers. Farmers put fertiliser on because they want a lot of grass. They want the grass, to take the grass off, to put in a silage plant, to feed the animals in the winter. And I think that graph is irrelevant today. Thank you.
It's not the amount of grass per se, it's the pattern of growth. And the pattern of growth will be the same way that you fertilised it or not. It's indicative of typical climatic conditions that contribute. Suffice to say, and the point I really wish to make here, is that there have been external factors that have contributed to some of the challenges we've faced. Nevertheless, we would admit, Glendale wish to acknowledge that we have found it difficult early on to deal with those external factors and that we acknowledge that we worked very hard to rectify the situation, but we would acknowledge our part in it, that, you know, we are the grounds maintenance contractor. We strive very hard to deliver the, and hopefully exceed the specification. So nevertheless, what we're saying is there are external factors, but there are factors which we would acknowledge where it has exacerbated the situation. And since we've worked very closely with our colleagues in the council, we've sought to rectify that. And in terms of where we are more recently in addressing a problem, Andy, if you'd like to pick out some of the points from the...
Yeah, I mean, obviously we've provided two reports. One to the leader, Julie Jackson, and councillor Lloyd, when we met with them regarding the issue. And essentially, as Mike said, we expected the peak at a particular time this year. We geared up earlier than that peak to make sure we were on top of it. It came even earlier than we expected. So we were on the cusp of dealing with the issue when it arose anyway. But, you know, we were particularly asked to report on monitoring and what we did about it. So essentially, the report provides detail on the extra 50,000 pounds we spent on higher labour, agency labour, and various other things we brought in to help us deal with the issues. And we continue to have a commitment to deliver the specification. I don't particularly know if you want me to cover anything else in the report. I always said what we do in terms of monitoring, we do our own internal monitoring to monitor if things are getting out specifications, rectifying them first, that's detailed. The other contract managers do three times a week, run them inspection, the supervisors do daily inspections, team leaders check work as it's been completed. So we do know what, we have our own internal quality control systems to make sure we are ahead of the curve. And as Mike said, we do acknowledge that, you know, we did get behind and we invested in excess of 50,000 pounds to resolve the issues and did it as quickly as we could.
There's, that's, I would say, the general overview of what we're trying to look at tonight. So just to do that, I would wish to bring the public in. And I shall do the, as the control, the people who are having the list in front of me, first of all, Michelle Condecar, would you like to address it, tell their panel, please?
Thank you. I mean, just as being from a member of the public's point of view and things, the main problem that I've seen going round is that areas just seem to be part done. I cycle a lot and things and I've sort of cycle out that, oh great, they're mowing the verges or whatever. And then when I cycle back and things, it seems to have been sort of abandoned, you know, halfway through. And things like around the road signs or lampposts or whatever, just doesn't seem to be getting done. So it always looks more of a mess and rather each section was actually done and finished. Similarly, sort of where their paths going, you know, across bits, for example, Orston Range and things, all the mowings and things seem to just sort of end up on the path, end up in the gutters. And there doesn't seem to be any coordination, you know, we have a road sweeper come round and things. But that's not tied in at all with when all these cuttings and things end up in the gutters and things. And we never used to have this problem, that's what I can't understand. So I don't know whether you've cut stuff and things. I know obviously costs have gone up and things. So I suspect that just hasn't been allowed because the, yeah, for, because the contract's been over, you know, a large period. Things also like sort of cutting hedges, you know, bits get cut, but then the cuttings aren't removed and things. And people were showing typical examples on Facebook just this afternoon at Buck Hill Cemetery, where all the bits have just been left. And in this heat, it just all wilts and looks absolutely awful and things. So there doesn't seem to be any planning that, you know, okay, we're not going to get all this done in one day. Let's cut that bit and clear that bit away and then come back and do the other half another day. It's just sort of left and looks a complete mess. I'm concerned about the complaints, you know, Paul Daly just mentioned, that if it's not done via the council customer services, that it doesn't get counted and things. Because I've reported things via Fix My Street, I've reported them directly by email and things. Because the problem with the customer services thing here at the council is you can't add photos. And photos are real help, you know, to you. Because when I have sent things to, you know, Paul directly, saying, this is the problem and things, you can see straight away, and you've always emailed me back pretty promptly and said, yeah, I can see that's an issue, I'll get that sorted. And it has been sorted and things. So that's a problem because it's, I mean, I don't necessarily need it to be registered as a complaint, but it's not being taken into consideration at all. You know, it should be comments and complaints and things. And the other thing I just want to quickly mention is yesterday at the cabinet meeting, when it was talked about the tendering process for a new contract and things, it said the specification, the specification is going to be a frequency based. And that is a big problem and things because that does not count for variations in the weather and things. So I think that really needs to be looked at for the tendering of the new contract regardless of who takes it on.
Any points of clarification for Mr Condecar, from anybody here? Yep. Next one is Consulor Jane Sargent. Thank you, Mrs Condecar.
Thank you. My name's councillor Jane Sargent and I am a borough councillor for our ward. We've had an influx of problems come to me and not from just my ward. So rather than ask you a question, what I'd like to just read is some of the things that they've sent to me, if that's okay with you. So Sylvia from Charmwood Avenue, the paths are a mess with grass verges and they're never cut. Patricia has complained that Cooten Road Cemetery, her parents' headstone, has been lashed with grass all over it. Headstone flowers were covered in grass and it took her over an hour to clean it, extremely upsetting. Jill has asked who tidies a grass area around Cats Gallo Bridge? That hasn't been done. Jenna went to Buck Hill Cemetery and found this and I was listening with interest to say that you've caught up with these. This was actually yesterday. And I'd like to have these because it's falling over headstones, they're covered in bushes that your lads have cut. That is the entrance to the cemetery. So I'd like to have these so you've got proof of what's actually happened yesterday, not a few weeks ago. My understanding is, is that I actually bumped into two of your lads round Enserpool, which is in my ward. And it was 11 o'clock in the morning, we'd actually got complaints and we was a child and her face scratched as they were walking around with their thing you'd sent the lads out. I bumped into them at 11 o'clock in the morning. I went round to the bit where it was scratched, they were leaving, that bit hadn't been done. Everything else was doing wonderful, but the bit I'd done hadn't been done. I waited, they never returned that day, they never returned the next day. It took a week actually to come and complete the whole lot. So where the complaints are that you're not finishing stuff, I think it's to start something and to finish and clear that first before we start something else. Because what happens is it just makes a mess everywhere and then continues round. The lads were really nice, they were really nice lads. What they said was, is that they receive calls to say they've got to go on other jobs. When they've been set a job in the morning, they go to start the job, then they receive a call by whoever and they're being moved. That's your problem. Thank you.
Any points of clarification for the Consulor? Consulor Keith Condecar.
Thank you very much, Chair. I'm one of the Weddington councillors. In Weddington, we have three lots of counterhouses. We have Ride Avenue, Cavers Brook and Creeley Gardens. There's been large areas here which have been originally hedges or bushes that have been stripped down to ground level to cut down costs. But no grass has been planted, so they just grow up with nettles and weeds and things. And the housing sites seem to suffer from areas that are in sort of a zombie state of that they're nothing now. So you just get a wilderness grown. So we do need to sort out our housing sites. And a lot of this may be the council's fault for not actually deciding or paying to get the site actually assigned to be now grass or now whatever. But the housing sites are really poorly maintained. And the tenants, be they leaseholders or council rent payers, are paying for this service. So it's not the council tax, this is being paid for out of our housing budget and they're not getting the service they require. Another issue is obviously hedges and bushes and things, which is like the winter maintenance. Some of it is done really well and... Some of it is done really well, and it's a bit random. But when it's done well, it's done well. But we don't get enough done in the winter. And then we get residents saying, this alleyway is closed down with overgrowth. And of course, it's their bird nesting season. So I don't think we did this winter a good enough cutback of the areas we know regularly close up in the summer to give us space. And I must actually thank Paul for the bit by the fancy pond at Clay, Pallet Drive. They were cut back really well because they asked me to cut back really well. But I count, the other 33 councillors, can't go to every location and get everything cut back every winter. You know, we're not 34 contract managing officers. We do need a better job of this winter clear. I say some things are really good, but there's a lot of holes. And one thing I want in the next contract is for the whole contract, as far as the maps and specifications, to be online. So councillors, the public, can see an area. I mean, a lot of people don't know, some of the hedges are actually county council hedges. And, you know, Glendale will get complaints, and I'll get complaints in the borough council, and I should be getting complaints to the county council. So I think there's a lot we can do in future years to actually cut down on the problems, whether a good winter maintenance, having a specification that's totally public, so people know what goes on where, and also, you know, who's responsible, because there's a lot of county and borough stuff, and just get stuff better. And finally, yesterday I was over at Sandown Park, and you were mowing the football pitches. So always last tractor mowing Dustfield. I mean, yeah, why are we mowing a football pitch in the middle of a drought? It's probably because the contract tells you to, but that probably needs sorting out. Thank you, Chair.
Any points of clarification for the councillor?
Chair, can I ask Mr. Con, councillor Condecar? Can you tell me what do you think the winter work, when the winter work should start for the pruning of the hedges, please? What date, what months do you think that should be done?
Obviously, it's a bit where it depends, but October is the basic clear of all the bird nesting, right through till March time. So it really is wintertime. And a lot of it, say, it's not going on wet ground. This is the hedges and the pathways and just cutting things back. A good winter maintenance would reduce the service calls out when spring comes.
Thank you.
Any other points? Thank you, councillor. And lastly, councillor Thomas. I've got, these are the people, I've got down the hand before.
I've had emails back with registry managers to speak, Chair.
I haven't received anything.
Shall I go now?
You've got it on your phone.
It's in my council one, Kelly, don't worry. Okay? Unbelievable.
So I've been seriously looking at Glendale performance for five years, lead up to me being elected and afterwards. And I would say that, you know, there's been some good periods, well, acceptable periods, but my residents in St Nicholas and in the wider area in the borough when I've spoken to them and knocked doors, is that they would, putting it politely, typify the performance of Glendale as consistently poor, as failing to meet their reasonable expectations year in and year out. And in fact, I looked at the emails that I've personally sent to officers, to directors, and to portfolio holders on the council. And in my first four years, I sent 141 about grounds maintenance specifically. It's 146 now, five more since I've been elected. So lots of problems, lots of excuses, you know. I wonder, you know, is it just Nanteton? Is it just Glendale? Is it, are you a small company that doesn't do it anywhere else? Actually, I looked on your website again, and you're still doing work for 30 other entities everywhere, from Edinburgh to Birmingham to London Boroughs to Torbay, the whole lot. So what is it about Nanteton and Bedworth where the standard seems to be different to these other areas where I understand? And as far as my research can tell me, you know, they have their ups and downs too, but nowhere near the history of Paul's performance that we've experienced in our borough. Is it our offices? Well, my experience of dealing with Paul and other officers has been very good. They try their best to get things sorted out, and have got a lot of one-off issues sorted to the benefit of residents, and I commend them for that. So it's not that. So what is the issue here? Well, I would suspect that the issue here is that all of these other organisations do something that the leadership of our council haven't done. They have a Plan B. They have lined up a whole load of alternative suppliers for their strategic contracts. When they start handing over a million or two, however much money is a year, to suppliers, they make sure that they've got an alternative supplier in reserve. This council seems to have done everything it can to avoid doing that, and I can't figure out why, and neither can my residents. I appreciate that it is difficult to terminate a poorly performing contract, and there will be additional expenses incurred by moving to another supplier. But there is a retention in the contract that would cover most of that cost. And there are things as reserves to cover these one-off incidents. So why has the council leadership, the political leadership, consistently failed to set up and put in place alternative suppliers being lined up to keep Glendale honest? Because that seems to be the only difference between all these other local authorities and Nanteton and Bedworth. The fact is, if you consistently keep messing up for Edinburgh or Enfield or Lewisham or Lincolnshire, they will cancel your contract for cause, terminate it for cause, and they'll give it to another supplier, an alternative supplier. Nanteton and Bedworth need to make sure that they have the same facility here and not kick the can down the road until the contract renews, because that won't actually come into effect until November 2019. So we need to keep Glendale honest until then with an alternative supplier in Lewisham. Thank you, Chair.
Any points of clarification for the councillor?
Chair, I just wondered if councillor Trammans has declared and direct evidence of the contingency which other counties, other local government organisations have. Because it does seem a really difficult exercise to keep on hand under the contract while this contract's running. And it may be that the guys here are standbys, if that is the case, for other contracts that are running in other counties. I don't understand how you make that contingency work.
You've just answered your own question there, councillor Trammans. No doubt, Glendale are standby services on other contracts. If they're not, then that's a bit worrying. It is common practice for larger organisations to have identified multiple suppliers of a service for outsourced services. They are not being suitably diligent if they award a contract without having anyone in a fallback position or any idea of who else they could approach if that contract is not maintained. That is just reasonable, good, standard business practice for local authorities and private entities alike. And if you are suggesting that none of these other entities have those arrangements in place, I'd be flabbergasted, and I think so would the public.
Councillor Trammans, how would you, I don't know what legal qualifications you are for, how much you know about contract law, but presumably, if you're going to terminate somebody's contract, you know, you'd have to have some evidence.
Cause.
If you look at the complaints recorded in the agenda, I don't think you'd get very far as that's a basis for terminating a contract, or perhaps you would say, have a look on Facebook.
I think as a portfolio holder and former cabinet member, and long time member of the Controlling Group on this council, you really have a lot more to answer there than I do, councillor Tomford, because I really, the point that I made very clearly here, and you don't seem to have picked up on it, is these other authorities wouldn't stand for this, they'd have an alternative. Our officers are unable to invoke that because the leadership of this council have not given them the authority to go and find alternative supplier lists. And so they are having to work with Glendale. And as a result, we've heard ourselves and officers tonight, we don't count a lot of complaints as complaints. If the council wanted to provide the evidence, all they have to do, they don't have to make anything up, they just have to accurately measure the Paul performance that is being expressed day in, day out, on social media, on the doorstep, at the ballot box, in the formal complaints, in the press. We all hear it as councillors, that, you know, if Labour members are going to tell us that all of their residents are delighted by Glendale's performance, then, you know, feel free. But I would suggest they're just as unhappy as my residents.
Yeah, I just wanted to know if councillor Trammans had seen the agenda, and actually that between April 17 and March 18, there were 121 registered complaints, but from April 18 to date, there have been 82.
Thanks for reminding me of that. I did read it online, but yes, clearly. But as we've said, that's just, it seems to be the tip of the iceberg. And if the council wanted to devote resources into measuring that, so it could terminate for cause, it could do. It just seems to have been a policy decision, it will never terminate Glendale, no matter what the cause is. And that's a worry for the residents of this borough.
Councillor, you're making assumptions here that I don't know whether they're true or not.
I didn't say that's the way it is.
Your generalisation, I do not accept. Any other points of clarification? Thank you for your evidence. Councillor Brown.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for your evidence.
I'm accepting that there may have been a mistake made, and consequently, would you like to address it?
I do appreciate it. I've just checked my phone, I emailed on the 5th of July. Anyway, first of all, just speaking as advocate on behalf of residents of Exall, Ash Green and Kersley. And in the short time I've been elected since May, I have to say that complaints about Glendale's service have made up the majority of my casework as a councillor. Nearly a day goes by when somebody doesn't get in touch with me about something to do with grounds maintenance, grass cutting, bushes, weed killing, that sort of thing. I would like to put this on record, my thanks to Paul Daley there. He must be pulling his hair out at the number of emails and photographs he gets from me. But, you know, he does a splendid job in making sure things do get done. Which gives him examples. Elvee Circle, Ash Green, nine weeks to get bushes trimmed after a site visit by council housing officers identified the problem. I went there myself and trimmed back the worst of the bushes in one section after a resident was cut on the face from walking through there, because we simply couldn't get you guys out there to do the job. Weed killing that took weeks to arrive, then you went round and killed plants that people have put out on the verges, as well as the obvious weeds. But the thing is, when you do turn up, which was the other week to Elvee Circle, the job, the work that was done was absolutely fantastic. On the plus side, residents were full of praise. So it shows it can be done, it's just not done well enough, often enough. School Lane, the flats at School Lane. The residents in the flats see John Hayes Court, the lawn 50 yards from where they live, cooked properly with a box cut. The same lawnmower then takes the box off by the looks of things, cuts a piece of grass outside theirs, and leaves the clippings there. So where their children play is covered in grass clippings. The drains get filled up with grass, so they don't work properly. And they watch the people in the old folks home across the way from them has got perfectly cut lawns. It just doesn't seem fair to them. People can understand inequality, but they don't appreciate its unfairness as they see it. So that's a problem. We've got Heckley Park, cricket pitch not cut correctly, long grass left in the park so people who wanted to clear up their dogs couldn't actually find the dog mix to clear up. It sort of beggars belief. Melville Close, a path that was so high in weeds, it was neck deep. So these things are just not being done. I've been down Almson Road today, and there's a two-feet strip along the edge of the road in places of dead grass where the weed killing's been done, and nobody's been to pick up the mess. So these things just need taken care of, please. You know, people pay for a service, they expect to see the service. And as for the definition of complaints, that is just ridiculous. You know, it has to be logged on this site, but if we complain to you, it's not really a complaint, it's just a comment. You know, let's ditch that. Any expression of dissatisfaction to this council made by a resident, in what sort of form anyway, is a complaint. Let's get that sorted.
Councillor Brown? Any points of clarification? No, thank you for your, thank you for letting me speak. No problem. Right, as we said at the last meeting, and I shall say it again, we are supposed to be talking about the quality of this council and how that policy is managed. We could all go through firefighting exercises of grass not being cut, trees not being trimmed, et cetera, et cetera. But I thought this panel was to deal with the overall policies and the handling of those policies within the borough. So if anybody's going to come up and mention various parts and pieces of the borough, it's the policy and procedures we've got to get right and mapping it for the new contract. Anybody from the panel wishing to speak?
Chair, before we continue, we had an email today at 9:30, or thereabouts, with two reports from Glendale submitted at a very short notice. And it says on the email that our copies will be distributed tonight. It would be useful, I'm trying to read them on a screen, but I've not been ignoring people because I'm trying to actually, most of us work, so we're trying to catch up with what's going on. So trying to have an informed base, it might be useful to have those reports sent.
I don't think, I don't think that's a problem. Anybody from the final wish to speak? Renata Stink? Councillor Tomford?
Chair, yes. I mean, we have a lot of assertions. I'm quite prepared to accept, you know, that, you know, Glendale is falling down on what they should be doing here, there, all over the place. But the evidence seems to be, you know, if a resident phones me up, I go and have a look. Okay? And generally, you know, there is something in what the resident says, I'll probably get in touch with Paul and it gets fixed. If I think, if I thought that the resident had a complaint, I would tell them to phone up customer service and register a complaint. And if they didn't feel up to doing that themselves, I'd do it. I think if we're going to bring about change, spend money, or spend money differently, we need to have a clear idea of where it is we're going from and where we want to get to. We've got lots and lots of individual residents' complaints, but the nature of the evidence we have is such that really making a change in policy on the basis of it would be very difficult, other than just to do more monitoring and have a closer inspection regime, which is very, very expensive. Perhaps that's what the panel would want to do. But I think before we sort of say, let's spend, I don't know, £40,000 or £50,000 on more effort at a time, or less, or whatever you want to do, or take somebody off doing something else somewhere, because I'm sure I'd get, no doubt, accused of wanting to spend more money. I don't, because we haven't got more, we've got less. We need to have much more detailed evidence of what, if anything, is going wrong, where it is, its generalised problem or what. I mean, we have people saying things like, we've all had loads of complaints. Well, if we've all had loads of complaints, all of us being councillors, it's not reflected in the data. Because if we've had a complaint, as councillors, we should know what to do with a complaint, and we should do it. That's why I have to say, Chair.
Blaine?
Thank you, Chair. Just two points of clarification, actually, because one of the things is within the report, I noticed on page seven... the report, I noticed on page seven of the photographs, Black Horse Road, and page eight of the report, I am Ridged Webb. At the time of this being done, this was under Barrett's. It was nothing to do with Glendale. As the Chair of the Residents Group, that's why I declared earlier on, we were liaising with Barrett's at the time because the gentleman that used to do the cutting retired and took all his knowledge with him, and we'd sent maps to Barrett's for them to still carry on cutting the area. I am glad for the Glendale did come out to do it, but it's still under Barrett's and I don't see why a council contractor should be doing it until Barrett's, you know, sign it over. And the other point I would like to make out is that I blame this council as well for some of the misleading of what should be going on. As I said at the last meeting, one of the things we note is that Glendale come and do a meter width cut. This is a specification from the council. The council say do meter width, keep the flora and fauna and the wild meadows so, you know, we can encourage bees and so on, so forth. But the general public do not know this. You don't tell us this. So if we were more informed on what Glendale's responsibilities were, we wouldn't be shouting and bawling about Glendale. And I can assure you, I've shouted loudly in the foot forums about Glendale many, many times. But, you know, we need to make the clarity out there that what is happening is the fault of either the council or of the contractor. Because if you don't do that, you're just muddying the water. We need to make the clarity better and clearer.
Councilor Elliott.
Thanks, Chair. I'd just like to read out an excerpt from the paper fifteenth of June twenty eighteen. "Overgrown grass verges are making the town's roads, roads look third world, the mayor has claimed. The problem we are presently experiencing are neglected grass verges. In the vicinity of the Hilltop Community Centre, I believe that it is a health and safety issue as many young children attend the centre and drivers may not be able to see them on the side of the road. At the top of the lane, there is a roundabout. The grass is exceedingly tall here and young children could definitely not be seen by motorists. The annoying thing is, we as motorists pay a fortune in tax with fuel duty, road and tax with the initial notion that someone's savings could go towards the upheaval of verges. This is High Wickham, Buckinghamshire County Council. The portfolio holder there, councillor Mark Shaw, responded that they have received no revenue grant from central government this year and warned the picture will be becoming bleaker next year. This is a almost a hundred percent conservative council. So it is disingenuous to claim that it is due to a Labour administration. It is up and down."
Mr Roth.
Today, we have just focused on the cutting, how good it is, how bad it is, the hedge cutting, et cetera, et cetera. But we'd like to find out from Glendale, the training of the personnel, you know, how they go about that, how they get the staff, how they prepare for the work they're going to do. And, I mean, do they take a pride in their job? For example, where I live, I've been a thorn in Paul's side for years over Paul's Land. And Paul's Land is, the entrance there is appalling. All around the signs and the lights, the posts, it just hasn't been touched at all. On my own strip going down, they stop before the light, the lamppost, and just leave it. Don't go around and finish the end bit, which I usually cut myself. And, you know, I just think, "Oh, I shouldn't be doing this." However, I feel they should be taking a pride in their work and I wonder how you monitor that. And I'm sure Glendale want to do a good job. I'm certain they do, and I'm certain they want their staff to be seen to be doing the work that we all expect them to do. But quite honestly, it is so frustrating. I mean, God, you know, maybe I'm a bit of perfectionist as far as cutting is concerned. But to see it all over the road and to see all the edges, they... On the narrow strip in Foxland, they seem to go on the quad bike and it's only what the quad bike with maybe one wheel can cut, you know, because the others on the road. And it really makes a mess. But, I mean, it just annoys me about when we go into Paul's Land and all that grass and shrubs are looking up, just all around the signposts and everything. We have visitors from all over the area coming there and I think that's very frustrating. But I would like to ask, you know, about the training, you know, what do they take in the qualifications, you know, what sort of management, what sort of supervision is out with crews when they go? One of the times when they finished, when they had finished cutting a Paul's Land itself, a young man on a quad bike was on his way out of the Paul's Land, and I said, "You haven't cut the strip in Melclose and this one, I'm not doing it." I said, "Well, it should, it's on your schedule. I know it's on your schedule." He just shrugged, shrugged and said, "I'm not doing it and I'll be ready." So, you know, I mean, probably as a member of the public, I shouldn't have, I have no authority anyway to ask him. But as a member of the road, you know, I felt that he should have done, he wouldn't have taken them.
Was he actually on a quad bike?
He was on a quad bike, yeah, a young man.
Yeah, it's probably been sprayed in then, at the moment.
That's why, that's three weeks back.
Yeah, because we haven't got quad bikers as well in.
Oh, right.
We've got quad bikers under spraying obstacles. So his answer could have been, "Don't do that."
I didn't see any equipment around the quad bike. There was a lorry in front, there was one of the Glendale lorries.
Yeah.
Went out first and he was coming behind and I was just coming in, walking in and I asked him.
Because obviously we obviously have different teams and different things. The guy in the van would probably go to the bin.
It's just frustrating. I mean, the same with the hedges. They will cut, because I contact Paul, and they will cut the hedge. But I've lived there for forty years and the hedges are just getting taller and taller, you know, so there's no trimming along off the top. They're just, it goes along with the flare or whatever they cut the hedges with and then it's...
The plant, yeah.
They're just hauling over into the road and the road's all...
I mean, if it has got too high, then generally you will have to reduce it.
Well, they need to do it, they do need to.
I mean, as far as training is concerned, that's okay. As far as training is concerned, if I go...
But I do, I just do wonder about, I mean, to take pride in your job. I mean, when we all go to work, we like to do a good job. But to be left like that, it's impossible.
One of the policies we've recruited certainly succeeded is that we always try to take people from within the borough, because obviously that's what we try and still give a pride of where people live. The opportunity of getting skilled staff every year, getting more and more difficult. Unfortunately, there doesn't seem to be an industry worth investing in. The local authorities are calling, closing on to us about, "Close their oil department down," that sort of stops that. From an internal point of view, the full-time guys, we have a training policy on not just, you know, the mandatory type of applications, spraying, a bit to pieces, of investing in them, in their sort of skill base. And alongside that, obviously, one of the biggest issues we've got now is the local authorities doing away with the apprenticeship schemes, because those guys just don't exist anymore.
I think we've recruited six of them over the last twelve months.
Yeah, and there's a six year this year and a six next year. So we understand, unless we have to take them on and train them. And, you know, by training, and we use personal college, you know, and again, it's quite expensive way of doing it, because personal, not down the road, we put them up for their weeks of break when they go away and do their sort of four-horse sort of training, classroom training. Because, you know, we do acknowledge the skills gathered within the industry as a whole. As for the people, you know, our guys wanting to take pride, that's something we are not struggling with, but certainly in the lean, it seems to be a bit of an issue, the way people dress, members of the public when they're asked. But, yeah, I wouldn't want anybody, if they've missed it, but they think, "Come back, you've missed it." But that should be something we need to do. It could be case you didn't realise and come back and go. And a part of that, part of our sort of annual training to the customer, care and services, is part of that, but it's still a bit...
There's been a noticeable reduction in pride since the social media campaign telling everybody they are rubbish. So I will note that, you know, there's a lot of the guys have come back and said, "No matter what we do, it's not good enough, you know, and we feel awful and we don't want to come to work in the morning." And we've lost a lot of good people this year because of that.
Good, just to add to that point, don't mind that we've got a bit of informality. But if anybody's going to speak, he speaks through the chair, thanks.
Sorry, Chair.
I just thought, great, I guess the case... Councilor Panda.
Chair, you know, at the start, you said, you know, the conditions, wet and this and that. The contract may be done five years or ten years. I haven't done the contract, the contract means I'm wrong. The specification of that contract, what was the price, was agreed at that time? And in the business, there's up and down come. But that we should not be sticking to the, whatever the specification was, they are last ten years, you know, only from this year, firstly. And second is the quality of the cutting. So, because I've seen a couple of places, I will show you the pictures. Then they just cut in the middle, then they left all outside. So if you think that the quality of cutting, you know, then, like, not the number... So you can see, right, you can show them, so they still, they still, can we say, these are the... So if you want to pass on to them, you can have them there.
I'm sure that Glendale and Paul are taking notes of each individual particular work and so trying to drag this back to policies of...
That's a very small area, Kingsdarden.
How the policies should operate or why they're not operating. Councilor Wilson.
Thank you, Chair. Before we actually go into debates, the substantive debate and perhaps questions Glendale, it might be useful if we heard from the, or I think it might be useful to hear from the portfolio holder as to what he's been doing, what meetings he's had, how he's been trying to progress things. Because we've heard from the officer's perspective, we've heard from the Glendale perspective, I think it might be useful to hear from the portfolio holder.
Yes, I have the portfolio holder coming up, not in the too distant future. Trying to get an update from Glendale, how the contract has worked at the present moment and the effectiveness of Glendale Live. I thought that might be part of the thing, well, we've got Glendale here and ask them what reinforcement is on the ground to improve the delivery of the contract, et cetera, rather than bringing in the portfolio holder at this stage. I would sooner, I would sooner us talk about, I must say, generalisation, but what we're talking about, we just know. And then, I'm trying to do it systematically, so then the portfolio holder comes in, portfolio holder gives his report to the panel, you can ask questions to the portfolio holder, but the current present moment is Paul and Glendale. I'm sorry if you think that's a bit long of a tooth and nail to do that with the council, but I can feel you.
No, as long as it's a... Just trying to decide what point I say certain things, because it depends on what other people say, might change my view on those things. But if we're going to question specifically Glendale at this point, could I ask a question of Glendale at this point? I have a couple of questions. You said in your opening remarks that there are a number of factors to the portfolio issues at the moment, external, you know, control completely get that, the weather isn't, whether we like it or not, is an issue. But you also said there were internal factors. I would be interested to hear more specifically what those internal factors are, were, if they're going on, what's being done to try and address those. And also, I'd like to go on to the document you provided with this, I don't know what you put, but it's not an action plan as I would look at it, with specific aims, timescales, who's going to get it. But you put together on page four of one of the documents, where you had a meeting with the parties here, you put forward some suggestions, such as removing annual bedding, some chip schemes, et cetera. I'd be interested to know what your thought processes were behind making those recommendations and what your evidence bases for making those recommendations and how that would improve the contract moving forward.
I think that's a good question. To address, to address your first question, a couple of examples of what I would pass as internal contributory factors. We had a significant piece of equipment that had had a breakdown and that happens early in the season. It took too long to diagnose the problem. That was with both internally and with a third party. But the responsibility of making a decision on that the ongoing diagnosis is to all the problem and therefore the interpretation of it was within our responsibility. So we passed that as a contributory factor. It was out of action for too long. We took, as issues started to escalate and the grass growth became apparent, we took action. But it took a little too long as far as working this out. I think secondly as well, recruitment, as I'm sure majority will be aware, we have a core level of staff that we employ all year round. And then we also recruit to take on fixed-term seasonal staff through the summer period. Although we were somewhat caught out by the early spike, in my opinion, we ought to have perhaps responded, you know, sort of with a little more interest in terms of the recruitment of those additional staff. There is a bit of a challenge around it in that you make, you undertake a recruitment process and you immediately start to have a churn, a turnover of people who turn up and then day one, or don't turn up day one. And it's perhaps something with hindsight that we could have done a little bit better. And that's, you know, as a team, as an organisation, those things happen from time to time. It's easy to say for me with the benefit of hindsight, the team were working very hard and there was a lot of pressure in a lot of different areas. And I would think those are two examples of things that were within our control rather than external factors. And there'd be a number of smaller day-to-day things that we would explain within the kind of services we deliver.
Councilor Brown.
Thank you, Chair. I've got a few questions I'd like to ask of Glendale, following what you answered the crips. I'm understanding that part of reason for delays was equipment breaking down. Why not simply rent equipment from elsewhere? I mean, if nobody is renting out grass-cutting equipment, then they're missing out on making a lot of money because surely you've got to have a plan B for when this sort of thing happens. It seems like there's a lack of safeguarding. And also, we use the weather as an excuse. There seems to be an emerging pattern in the late spring of a lot of rain and a lot of sun. I mean, it's hardly freak weather we've had for the last few years. So surely you've got plans for weather like that. We've got to assume that this weather's going to be the new norm because there's an emerging pattern that spring is like this now. And it's not exactly freak, it's not drastically different from what we've had in previous years. It's probably a little bit warmer, but that's about it. Also, there seems to be a lot of communication problems within the organisation from what I've observed, talked to some members of staff there who feel like they're not told everything they need to be told. For example, we've had situations where there's had to be multiple rectifications because they weren't told to install a foundation for a fence that they'd just installed. So they had to come back, dig out the fence, then put in foundations again. And I think they had to come back several times to do that work. Other issues that we've had is a wildflower meadow where some flowers have been planted by volunteers' children, mind you, and then they were destroyed by Glendale when they were doing the works there, obviously rendering that work uncomplete. And I've seen the pictures, so I've got the evidence to prove that. You've got all of that information there. I think, I don't know if we're going to bring up the policy in the debate or whether we're talking about it now. So I'd just hope Chair's guidance on that.
Just on this one, just here, that's one of my other, is that case you mentioned was a different contractor, not Glendale.
But we've all got the Borough Council here. Maybe I shouldn't have addressed that to Glendale, but it's somebody who does a job on behalf of the Borough Council. So that's another lack of communication within that organisation and the council. Because of course, if I recall properly, residents were chastised rightly or wrongly for planting a tree there because it was a wild meadow. And of course, it's a bit hypocritical for the council to destroy wildflowers after they were angry at residents for apparently endangering the ecology there. But that is definitely, although it's not a Glendale issue, as I've been advised, it is an issue for the Borough Council communication-wise to improve on. But again, I'd like some guidance on that. The way I believe it, right now, we're asking questions of Glendale and council officers, then we'll be going into debate afterwards. Because I've got some more issues to raise, but I don't know.
Well, that was the intention, that was, to try and deal with it. Councilor Walton.
Yeah, a couple of questions for Glendale, really. The first one, I want to sort of touch on his cemetery, is actually I want to build on a little bit what councillor Sargent said. We had in the minutes, if you want to call them an action point, I agree with councillor Wilson on that, but the minutes, action point from the meeting... But the minutes, action point from the meeting on the fourth, the leadership says clearly that it recruited senior cemetery teams, trophy or cemetery operations. They're also looking at additional agency staff on contracts over the next couple of weeks. And yet we still seem to be having issues with cemeteries as recently as, I think you said yesterday or two days ago. I mean, what I want to know really is, you know, what specifically more can perhaps be done on cemeteries? Because they are a particularly sensitive area, as we can all imagine, for people who are visiting loved ones. And evidently those measures that have been taken there don't seem to therefore have resolved the issue of they're still being occurring as recently as a couple of days ago. Another question is actually in the last couple of weeks, even in the middle of the heatwave, and I'll be happy to be corrected if it's not Glendale, but planting of flowers that have been taking place, they then don't seem to be watered, they die and then they're replanted with new flowers. So really, who therefore and what monitoring is being put in place of flowers that are being planted to ensure that they're watered and hydrated? And actually also specifically who actually therefore pays for the cost of these replacements if they're not being watered and looked after?
And just pick up on the specific point you've raised about planting and watering, the responsibility for irrigating plants is ours. We do have a comprehensive programme of watering that takes place in normal working hours and well outside of normal working hours. So bar any minor errors, and I wouldn't imagine that the guys are really on top of it, that watering does take place. Sometimes plants won't establish, it's a challenging time of year with this kind of weather to establish plants and ideally, or if we're equally, we would prefer not to. But bedding plants have a defined season when they need to be planted and it's particularly warm. So there will always be a replacement, a small proportion of those. We plant some tens of thousands of plants each year. The responsibility for replacements in the event of them not being established is ours and that's at our cost.
Counselor Sargent?
Sorry, can I ask you a point on cemeteries as well?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Could you just? Yeah, it was basically sort of specifics on what more can be done. Because relating to the points from the fourth, where actually there were action points there that were supposed to be being done. And what monitoring have we got to ensure performance is improving following the evidence from Counselor Sargent earlier on?
Chair, I've got a couple of issues. I think there is a specification issue, I think you might expect, I'm sure there's a specification which perhaps Paul or others can confirm. But I think in terms of what we've done in terms of monitoring, we have recruited a new cemetery team leader whose responsibility would be to monitor our cemeteries. We have taken the decision, because there was a significant increase in horizons in cemeteries, that the specification is to cut and drop and to get round to keep the grass at a certain height. Because the grass growth has been prolific, that's left a lot, quite a lot of horizons.
Sorry, you say cut and drop, could you, drop, sorry?
Generally two types of cutting regime, cut and collect, cut and drop, which means you leave the horizons on the top. Yep. So because there's been a prolific amount of grass growth early in the season, there was a lot of horizons which made it look unsightly. So what we did, we, in consultation with the officers and, and we discussed it with Counselor Lloyd and Counselor Jackson, we took on a team, increased the team at our own cost to get round quicker, which we wouldn't normally do, which reduced the horizons. So we have put a number of things in place to try and improve what we do in cemeteries. But, you know, short of collecting the grass, which would cost the authority significant amounts of money.
Counselor Sargent?
One of the things that you raised there was about this sort of morale of your work. And one of the things that always sticks in my work for companies, I've been in and back home at the time, one of the things was trying to keep the morale of your team deep. What sort of things are you doing proactively to, you know, so lots of people put pictures of bad workmanship, if you like. You know, why not put Glendale Facebook web page or whatever it is with good workmanship? So when we go around and do a good job, put that picture on there.
Chair, may I?
Yeah, moment.
There's a number of things we do with regard to staff within the organisation. Effective communication at all levels, we have newsletters, we have, you know, toolbox talks that are just about, you know, undertaking a particular operation in the correct technical area. It may be about customer interaction. We have, we do try and engage on a number of levels. Our management team, well, from myself and everybody included, are encouraged repeatedly. And I think we do compliment staff when we feel they've done a good job. And we have an employee forum that we hold, so it's two-way communication. So we try and do what we can. It is disappointing that someone comments about, that I've picked up on the morale of the staff and that does affect the pride and pride in work is absolutely key to delivering the quality, fine detail, which I have noted has come up as a recurring theme in terms of some of the consistency and we'll definitely take that away. I have reservations about social media as a platform for an organisation. It tends to be unless you put a huge amount of resource into it, and we're not an organisation that is a social media driven organisation, you have to put a huge amount of resources to manage it and effectively create a forum. People generally to be negative and we'd have to spend the vast majority of our time trying to counterbalance that. So it isn't that we don't engage, but we do our level best, but we're not assured social media is the platform, might we do interact with our staff, but not in a general, you view, manner.
I think, I just think if you can try and get the good stuff out there, then, you know, there's a balance, isn't there, every minute you sort of down here, you know, there's a council, we get stick from people, we do, we do, we do. Can I, you've commented that, you know?
Well, I think we did a job, we did, I think it was where an island needed to be readdressed. And we had a team work completely overnight and it was tweeted at the site, tweet feed. And a councillor from the authority just tweeted back, well, that explains why they're asleep all day. So even though we do try to put it, and that, you know, that hurt a lot of people, you know, it really does.
I'm just trying to address the balance for you, for your work, if you know.
Chair, may I just add one? It's a very interesting point we discuss frequently within the senior management team of the organisation. I personally believe that on occasion we should try to redress the balance and correct some sometimes factual inaccuracies or sensationalism that we do see through, particularly through social media platforms. Some people may take that at face value. Unfortunately, you, as a hardcore minority, that will persist or up the ante in terms of their negativity irrespective of what it is, we think, percent. So we are very, very much taking on board your point about staff morale, motivation, pride in the work and the take. The channels and means by which you do it are the sort of, it's the, it's the interesting part.
It's the, it's the classic sort of multi-part of what the residents do, do, isn't it? So what did Glendale do for them? And that's what you've got to ask people, isn't it?
Counselor, if we just add one last point, I think I probably got the most active Twitter feed on the, on the, for the company, for the region. Last year I took quite a lot of pride in tweeting some of the good work we've been doing on Eton. And most of it sort of felt favourably, if you like, with only one or two sort of minor negative comments calling about. However, this year because of the, because of what I've seen on Facebook, I've deliberately avoided tweeting about me for fear of, you know, some of you really doesn't, you know, doesn't like what we're doing, coming back and, you know, setting us up and all that.
Counselor Gavtrich? Thank you, Chair. I'd like to ask Glendale, the dealings I've had with Glendale, I found very professional and the staff I've dealt with are very good. I'd like to go back to grass cutting. Could you tell me how many mowers you've got out, cutting the grass at the borough at any one time? Please?
We had, we have seven mowers. Two on each contract and then a high profile route. During the web period, we hired in a third of our operators and brought in two.
So you had, you've got seven mowers, you hired out another one, so you ran eight. And then you, then do you run a streaming team with them afterwards?
Yeah, we got a streaming team coming up, obviously.
Well, we tried not to stream, for the main reason of, from a health and safety point of view, from damage to cars and people. So what we tried to do is spray all the obstacles out to avoid having to strip. The machine that went down this year, of course, this year with the quad bike that we had, it was one of them, it got into two or three dealers. We've been told, yeah, you have it tomorrow, it'll be done tomorrow. Tomorrow turned into a week, turned into a fortnight. And then, but not the easiest things to hire out. Managed to find one from Scotland somewhere, which we since bought to replace the one that we've got. We say, but as a streamer, we try to avoid streaming obstacles.
Can I move further on from there? Do you think you've got enough mowers there to fulfil the contract?
Yes, yeah, Chair. Obviously, the amount of grass we've got, obviously we know what a mower can put in a day. And that's why we know it, originally I think it's a five year, now it's been six. And we then opted to sell it to take the high priority road, high priority route out and put it in there. But they're just the verge mowers, the lot couldn't include the gang mower, it was a complex, I don't think, so.
And then going on from that, can you tell me about Glendale Live? I'm very intrigued with this Glendale Live. We had a chat about it and I want to know, will you be rolling it out to the end user? Basically the residents? Yeah, I actually got myself going to ask that question.
Sorry, Chair, I'll let you ask it then. You can ask it more urgently, I don't know.
Summarise that, not exactly, but summarise.
Okay, Chair. And yeah, Glendale Live is a work-based, sorry, cloud-based work programming tool. We put all the data that is provided to us by the city council as well as our own and then we allocate by data, I mean site information and task information. And we structure that into various teams and allocate them routes for the primary activities. Each team has a handheld PVA device which has that information on it and we have the ability to see that back at our office and to change that data. This is the first year we've implemented it here in Leighton. And it's a brand new version that we developed over the winter period within the organisation. It is fair to say that we've had one or two, I would say expected, what I would say proportionate teething issues that you would always get with a handheld doesn't work properly or there's some data inaccuracies, staff training issues. But, you know, they're relatively minor, it has been pretty effective. It becomes a bit of a challenge when it's almost, not quite all bets are off, but it becomes a particular challenge when the conditions we've had because you then have to change teams around, you've got to reallocate that data, et cetera. In terms of accessibility for the, it's something that we defer to our client in terms of what data we make accessible. We are seeking to potentially widen it out so that residents, yourselves, et cetera, are able to see when, for example, their grass was last cut and within a certain window of tolerance when it might be cut next. So it's primarily an internal management tool for ourselves. There is certain data that we can make available, but that is something that we really need to be discussed and agreed through our client.
As I was always prepared, that was a management tool, what you could.
Right, I said.
If I can add to that, Counselor Gavtrich. And it's, it is in the report, the, it, with the new, intended new contract, that any, winning contract will be required to provide some form of management system. I can't tell you what that system reads, I don't know who the contractor reads it.
No, of course.
It's a kind of management system that will be available not only to us as managers that also have a portal, that the general public, members, will be able to access through, it may be, we talked about having a map which you can look at or some form of system where you can put in a postcode and then link to, and it will identify when you're next on the route or where you are on the route. That is, that had been written into the new contract and will be a fundamental part of that going forward.
Westfield, yeah. Can I, can I just say, can I come back, Chair? Thank you, Paul. I did email you about some grass cutting in the Whitestone Ward and you did come back and say it would be done on X, Y, Z. And you said you'd looked on the Glendale Live system. And it's true to your word, within those two days it was done. Thank you for that.
Counselor, Chair, could I just add something? I just, like you say, our decision to implement Glendale Live with this contract was done as part of our partner arrangements to move things forwards and make improvements in the borough. It's not something we costed and it's a significant expense. So just, you know, I sort of wanted to just make people, make people in the room aware that, you know, there's a number of things that we tend to, Glendale Live was not, was not one of those. And it's part of our economical advancement, if you like, to give the officers more visibility of what we do. So it's an extra, if you like, that, you know, we've not come back and said, you know, we don't have any payment for this, this should help you a little bit and, you know.
And to the next generation.
Thank you, Chair, just to add to the point in terms of monitoring, what it has done is enabled the monitoring team to focus on performance and to identify areas where performance has not occurred. So as Counselor Gavtrich has said, where we can see that the performance is occurring, we can strike those off our performance list, especially if we get a complaint to check on specific issues. But what we can then do is identify areas that have been completely missed. And that's been very helpful to Paul's team in particular in being able to focus resources where they are most needed.
Counselor Sargent, did you want to make a point on?
I just wanted to ask, yeah, whether the Glendale Live had made a difference to you as a business. So, you know, yeah, there's team problems, but in a sense, has it helped yours, it speeding things up, is it?
Chair, thank you. The short answer is yes. We consider it to be something that is, you know, is mandatory to introduce to all our new contracts and we're retrospectively introducing our existing contracts. The idea is it makes us more efficient. Sure, there are bedding in challenges, the quality of data available to us, whether that's GIS maps or just postcodes or full site addresses and how much grass hedge, flowers, et cetera, there are at each site. The quality of that or level of detail of that data has an impact on how effective it can be. The idea is that it reduces the administration time for ourselves and for our clients so we can be focused on, more focused on what we need to be doing, which is delivering a quality service in a timely fashion. And it enables us to redirect resources when issues do arise more efficiently. Because one of the sort of damaging elements of facing challenges that we've been discussing is that if you then start moving resources off their route to address particular problems, if the time scale demands it, for one circumstance, it then has a further detrimental impact on keeping on top of the remaining. Same before talking about grass cutting, careful, there's a vicious cycle. Glendale Live enables us to manage that a bit more, enables us to challenge our resources, our staff, to make sure they're doing what they need to be doing, when they need to be doing it. And also to, you know, to come back to your earlier point, to compliment them and be supportive when they're doing a good, an effective job.
Right, at this point, is there any councils or members of the panel who wish to speak who hadn't spoken before? I've got a list of people who have spoken before and I shall go through them next, but if, nobody? Okay. Glenn?
Well, just going back to staff morale. We did a housing walkabout in Grove Farm, Heart Lane Flats, last week. And we met up with one of your lads. He was visibly upset because the day before he was on site and all his equipment got stolen. He was so, so upset by that, it was unbelievable. And I'd like, if you know who it is, please say he was absolutely fantastic. Me and the mayor actually mentioned that a certain part needed doing. The gentleman took his equipment back off his lorry and done it. But he was visibly upset by the fact that he'd been robbed while on site. And it can't be nice to be a lone worker and go back and find that gone. And it ruined the rest of his day. So we'd like it to go back to the gentleman to say, you know, we were grateful for his, the way he treated that. But I think also, again, on But I think also, again, I'm going to harp on the council's view. I think councillor Brown mentioned about you cut complexes and you do cut and remove, but then when you go over the road, you don't do cut and remove. It's again, the council should clarify who the responsibility is because for complexes, the people there pay the service charge to have a cut and remove and the other ones don't. So, you know, it's all down to clarification of what is responsible for Glendale and what is responsible for the council. And until both of them meet, talk and talk properly, us as residents are just going to sit there and go, heck, they're all useless, let's just sack everyone and get on with it.
Consul Walton?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to go back to the question that I didn't get answered previously, which was about the suggested modifications, changes that you put in the report that you provided. I just thought it might be useful if you could explain the rationale behind the different suggestions, recommendations, what the basis behind that and how that would actually make improvements to service delivery moving forward. Page four. The one we just got executive summary on the first, on the first page, thirteen, twenty-two.
Yeah, this was, this came out of the meeting with Julie and councillor Oliver and councillor Jackson. And there was a discussion about what we've seen in other burrows that we thought might be a benefit. And we just used our, Mark himself used our experience of what we'd seen elsewhere in Barry, just to sort of make some suggestions of what could be considered. So it's not, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't particularly anything to do with the contract as such. It was more of a sort of, you know, an evolution type thing, if there was things that could be considered in the future that we'd seen that have reduced maintenance, saved, cost savings, you know, so that resources could be deployed on other things that were more of a priority like cemeteries.
So out of the list that you've provided here, which ones, in your opinion, would make the most difference? Be able to concentrate on the core areas of the contract, which provides the biggest benefit to residents?
I probably need to, I think about that and come back to you, to be fair.
Really, Chair, I think, and I will ask questions of the portfolio holder on it later, but I think from a scrutiny point of view, I think it's vitally important that we as members have an input and discussion about these because it does have an impact on our residents. The expectations they have, because it's us who end up managing that expectation as councillors. But also it's saying that we propose a working group with NVBC off it. That's all one and good, but I think there needs to be member input, not just from the portfolio holder, which is right appropriate, but there needs to be an element of member involvement through scrutiny, of members' working parties, whatever. Because this is, this could potentially be changing the tender that we have or modifying the contract that we have with you. And I think it's striking that balance between accountability and service delivery.
Last question that you posed to.
As long as I get an answer, I don't really mind if anyone's wrong.
The area where we would generate the most savings to, which could potentially be used elsewhere would be annual bedding.
So what do you mean by reducing the annual bedding? What would that mean that residents would see?
Residents would see less annual bedding. I don't, that sounds flippant, but it needs to sound flippant. But that, we could reduce the amount of annual bedding we provide. And that then when it could be rediscputed potentially into cemetery, cemetery maintenance, for instance. I'm going to use this as an example. It could be used for additional cutting in the cemetery in the spring to reduce the cutting, which has been highly promoted eventually.
So would that mean? I'm just trying to get my head around what this would mean in practice. Would that mean, for example, I know you pick a square metre or whatever and that would mean you plant, I don't know, fifteen plants instead of twenty? Or would it mean you would consider turfing over previous displays? Because I know, for example, if you go down Curtain Road, there used to be displays on the left hand side by the church, didn't there? And a number of those have been turfed over now, haven't they? So is that the sort of thing we're talking about?
It could be wholesale, it could be wholesale, sorry, Chair. It could be wholesale removal. It could be changed to something else, wallflower. I don't think that's mentioned here. It could be changed to wallflower, I don't know, because it's significantly less cost. If members wished or whoever wished to see that as an alternative, change it to a shrub bed, which has got to actually reduce costs as well. There's various alternatives out there, but removal of annual bedding would, is essentially going to cost saving.
I think that's probably our experience due to, you know, unfortunately, due to some quite severe budget cuts that local authorities have faced over the last number of years. Some pretty tough decisions, but in terms of is it about maximizing the quality and ensuring that the quality remains in cemetery maintenance, for example, versus nice to have an attractive bedding? And you could even put in Haveshport, it's got substantially less per metre than annual bedding or it could be shrubs or it could be turfed over. Or bedding is quite expensive and they're tough decisions. But a number of our clients have gone through the sort of, you know, some have made no change, but it is an option to go through and review the safe provision of bedding. Something which I know Leighton is very, Bedworth is very proud of. They have some fantastic displays. It's an option for consideration. I would also add from the point of view of perception that there are areas that don't fall into either, you know, pure lawn grass or informal shrub. And it's quite difficult to sort of, it's a maintenance item. And they sometimes fall a bit betwixt and between. And there are certain things we could do together is identify some of those which might improve resident satisfaction by bringing them more into one regime or.
One final question I do have, Chair, it's probably one of the most important questions, is what lessons have we actually learnt from this period of issues that we have? And what are you going to do moving forward to try and address those issues for the next year?
Can I mention? We learn lessons every day about service, what we do as a business, as an organisation, as individuals. And we hope that applies and we strive to ensure that applies to that stuff as well. Numerous issues have been raised, it's difficult to assimilate or distill that down into one or two things.
If that were, had to be done this year, from the initial action plan that we've put in place. And obviously with the benefit of using Glendale Live, when we sort of saw the issue that we're building all of the grass, one of the most difficult parts of the year we had was when some of the bedding gets put in, you know, to the May time. It's our busy part with the grass, this was sort of, obviously, aggravated with the amount of growth that we had. So we took the decision quite early on then, we'd already dealt with agencies that had, you know, sort of semi skilled staff and what we need. So that's when we took the decision to sort of lengthen the agency staff a lot sooner than we would have. When it came to the bedding, we had all the agency staff doing all the stripping, digging, which was a skilled item. So we left all the skilled staff carrying on what they were doing. And that's, you know, where it does have to work. And moving forward, that's where, you know, that's a real lesson learned. So soon as we sort of see an issue and there might be another sort of spike in work, we have sort of provisions in place to act on that stress away, so.
Okay, I've got two more councillors indicated they wish to speak. And then it's my intention to invite their portfolio holder to the meeting. Consul Grant?
Thank you, Chair. I have one more question for Glendale. We were told at a previous planning environment oversight scrutiny panel meeting about a year ago that Glendale were purchasing more equipment that could cut grass and spread out the trimmings more evenly. Because I know that one of the major complaints we've had is how entitled it looks, especially during the first cut of the year when the grass is pumped up. I understand it's not in the contract to remove it, but I know that you said that you were purchasing more of this equipment. Can you tell me if this has come in and if my suggestion of using it wherever possible on the first cut of the year to improve the appearance of the area has been taken on board? And whether it's being used more?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, what we've done, we've retrofitted our, on the, our first mowers with mulching blades and mulching decks. So obviously rather than just short this jar, it's going up the side, you've got to put a lot more and that's on all the machines now, so.
Consul Wong, please.
Thank you, Chair. We please know it's more of a comment and observation. I just think that going back to things that Mrs Bryce has said, other members have said, other public speakers have said, and St Paul touched on earlier, saying that, you know, this new, a new live, public live system is being written into the new tender. I think it's absolutely echoes and really points to the points that many, particularly on my side, have made, that we should be, as members, even on paper, seeing the specification early so we can actually know what we are expecting for future going forwards. And actually, we should be putting as much of this in publicly as possible. Members that say public know, actually, we only cut two feet or you will get six cuts a year. And that may actually also help address some of the other balances as well.
I did, I did my intention, Consul, to bring that up towards the end. Because there is obviously this commercial confidentiality implied in what you're saying at the present moment. And that might have to be dealt with at.
I'm not asking for details at the moment, Chair, I'm just making clear the principle.
I'm just clarifying, I'm just clarifying exactly what you said and.
For clarity, I'm not asking for anything commercial, I'm just asking the principle at least on that.
I understand that and I appreciate what you're saying. But hopefully we can, we will come to that in not too distant future, so we'll say. Consul Lloyd, would you like to address the panel?
Thank you, Chair.
I'm going to touch on the, touch on the last item first so I can get that. I did commit last night at the cabinet meeting, I'll be a full briefing to all members in the first instance as soon as the specification is completed. We're virtually there, all I ask is please wait and it will come. I'm hoping to have it in front of you in the next month. So hopefully we'll get that to you. But that'll be a presentation by officers, not Glendale or anybody else and the specification we put in, we're asking to go forward into the next tender. The history of the specification for the new councillors is there was a scrutiny meeting. It went to scrutiny and scrutiny decided to have a working party. That working party then went through different ideas and came up with some recommendations to the officers, what they wanted to see in the spec. And that is the process it's gone through. So it'll come to a full briefing of all members once it's completed. On the monitoring, I'll just touch on the monitoring. You heard Paul say earlier on that we have one full-time post, one full post, not full-time one, one full post and two half-posts doing different, different things, different monitoring things. One's monitoring housing, HRA land, one monitoring informal and the other one informal, to do the whole borough. You've heard me say on numerous occasions at full council, at cabinet meetings, wherever I possibly could in the press, it's not just up to Paul and his team and Glendale to monitor or self-monitor the contract. It's down to us as councillors as well to monitor that contract. It's down to us as councillors to put forward the issues that are arising in the community and report them through a mechanism. Now, it's fine having a number of different mechanisms, but it's difficult to manage a number of different mechanisms and things get lost. The only good mechanism there is reporting it directly through to the communications team, that's communications, sorry, the customer services team. Last year, I trialled reporting because, I'll be honest, I never done it. I used to just send an email or make a phone call. And I thought, people keep telling me this, I've been telling, I'm going to try it. I went out when we hit a bad spot towards the end of the last growing season, I would put it that way, last summer. And I can't remember, eighty odd issues I emailed through with photographs to customer services. You can send photographs through to customer services. It's simple, if I can do it, anybody can do it, I can assure you. I did that and I got responses, I got reference numbers that I could track. And then I got another email come through to tell me who it's gone to. And then a final email came through to say it had been resolved. And I created my own spreadsheet on the computer to track what I'd put in because I'd put in quite a large amount of notes, it's a load of complaints. So it can be done. The public phone in, they're recorded. The public go through to customer services, they're recorded. If they email, they're recorded. If they're on social media, they're not recorded. As simple as that. I give up over a month ago chasing social media. Because no matter what you do on social media, no matter what you say, you get lambasted for it. And I for one, I'm not doing it anymore, I can assure you. It's as simple as that. So you can say what you want, but I will not go on social media. I will, what I will do and what I have been doing, and there's people out there, if I pick up a complaint viewing social media, there's a difference in viewing and actually going on and commenting. If I pick up one on social media that I viewed, I inbox them and I go that way. So it doesn't end up on social media. And I resolve the issue and I've resolved umpteen issues by doing that, as Paul knows. On what we've done, obviously, there was a spike on social media back end of May, early June. There was a number of complaints, not a mass, but a number of complaints. And then all of a sudden, it escalated. There's many reasons why that escalated, some is the work's not been done, some was politically motivated or there wasn't, but there was a lot of complaints on social media. So at that stage, I decided that I needed officers to meet Glendale at the end of May, which they did. The spike continued, so then I insisted that myself met with Glendale and officers here as high up the tree as we possibly could get. Most of the gentlemen that are opposite there were at that meeting. And that was, I think, on the fourth of June. At that meeting, I asked councillor Jackson, as the leader of the council, if she wanted to attend. And she agreed to attend. What I did, I sent out to members a request to send in photographs from all around the borough of the issues within their ward. I've got to say, I was disappointed, very disappointed. The fact that I had to go round the whole borough on my own with councillor Jackson and take photographs myself, which I did in a number of wards across this borough, both in Dedrough and Leighton. I did have, I will say, I had councillor Goldby, I had councillor Smith, and there was one other councillor from the Conservatives. From the Conservatives, I had another councillor, I can't remember, please forgive me, who the third councillor was. And the fourth councillor come back after the deadline, that was it. From the Labour councils, I had a similar amount. So not unique to any party, it was across the spread. So I included, I'm not finished.
What can I just say though? You're making assertions, but no new councillors received that either.
I'm not making assertions. Councillor, I'm not finished, I didn't interrupt you. Let the portfolio holder finish. So I went through and I did that off my own back, right, because I knew there was a problem. I didn't get the support. I've got to be quite honest, I was disappointed by all members, I didn't get the support. So I went out and did it myself. And I'll be honest, I did Camp Hill first, it's my ward. And so Jackson did her ward first. And then we went round on a route round the borough and we did your ward. Got to be honest, I didn't do St Nicholas, I didn't go into St Nicholas, I didn't go into Weddington. I've got to be honest, I went into Balkington, but finally councillor Smith sent me some from Balkington and I had some from Galliconan, but as I say, they were too late. So I put all those photographs as evidence of Glendale not cutting the grass where it was. was overgrown, where it was shabby, et cetera, et cetera. I went to complaints that I'd seen on Facebook, and I included them in the, photographs from them in the presentation, I built up a presentation as best as I could, uh, that reflected the borough. I took that presentation to Glendale, and I delivered that PowerPoint presentation to them, and asked them what they were going to do about it. I had suggestions of my own, and there was a lot of suggestions, um, that are on that page, four, which were my own suggestions and officers' suggestions of, um, trying to overcome future, next year, uh, issues if they arise. One of the problems we have, we have only so much money in the pot. So the only thing I can do is reshuffle that money. So the way I suggested that we reshuffle the money within, um, that particular budget part, was to look at what we did. The public were shouting they wanted more cuts in cemeteries, we're going to deliver that, and that's what we're hoping to do by introducing some of the things within there. The public were saying they wanted more cuts in public parks, we're going to try and deliver that by reducing elsewhere. We have to reduce elsewhere to meet the public demand in those areas, it's as simple as that. So removal of annual bedding in certain areas, and I'm not talking of destination parks, I'm not talking of town centres, so on the outline areas, and, uh, oh, sorry, I am talking some, some areas in, um, the town centres, removal of annual bedding areas and replace with either turf, meadow, or wildflower, that was my idea, I wanted to see more wildflower in, in the, uh, community. I've seen it elsewhere, I've seen it down Norfolk where I go on holiday, I've seen it around here, I've seen it in Coventry when you come through the islands, it looks beautiful. Um, we've got to introduce more wildflower, and it's cheaper than the annual bedding, but still looks equally as colourful. Introduce a sponsorship scheme to local businesses, and can sponsor, so they can sponsor, um, the cost of a flower bed, i.e., they get advertisements, we've been criticised for not doing it in the past, we should be doing it, I've seen it done elsewhere, you go around islands all over the country, and you see this island is sponsored by, or this flower bed is sponsored by, and it's a company that sponsored it. Um, removal of poor quality low amenity value shrubland, well, that came from the officers, um, they said we should remove, um, and it's come from councillors, to be fair, councillor London is one that's been shouting continuously about removing certain shrub beds because residents want them gone. The introduction, introduction of, they call it a citizens' scheme, the community groups are able, um, to participate in the flower beds in our town centres. Um, yeah, I suggested that, and I'm going to run with that, I think it's a fantastic idea. Uh, people out there, I mentioned, you talk to Facebook, on numerous occasions, all I heard on Facebook was, it was far better when we was in Britain in Britain in Bloom, when we had our own workforce. Well, we haven't got our, our own workforce, unfortunately, that went in 2009, and it's going to be very, very difficult to compete to get that back in house. So, the only likely, we're not going to get an in-house, um, workforce, so I had to look at ways of trying to bring back some sort of, uh, pride within, um, the, uh, within the communities and the gardens, and the way of doing that is involving them. And I've said it before, and I'm going to say it again, and I'll say it every opportunity again, I said it, and I gave a presentation at the, um, breakfast lunch for over, I think there was nearly a hundred, uh, companies there, different companies from all around this borough, and when I was giving the same presentation that I gave, uh, previously, and I gave in the press, every one of them were nodding and saying, "Yes, yes, yes, this is what we should be doing". That's the industrial side of the business sector of this community. After that meeting, there was a queue of people wanting to see me, five companies come forward straight away and said, "We want to participate in this". So there is, um, the, uh, uh, want to do this out there. Community groups, just from the press, um, there's, uh, one, two, three community groups that have shown interest, just from the press. So there is individuals out there that want to take part and want to push this forward, and if it brings back, um, some community ownership, that we keep being said, then I'm going to push forward with it. If scrutiny want to contribute into that, and make suggestions, great, that's fine, but I ain't holding it off so we miss another year. I do intend to try and bring this in next summer. Introduction, I'll talk about that, um, the other ones on there, um, the reviewing of bowling green provision, that's already taking place, that's already going on, so, um, I think that was a suggestion probably by, um, by Glendale. Um, but from that meeting, we asked Glendale to go away and look to see if they could participate in some of these things. I'm getting the nod from over there now, and I was getting the nod then, but they wanted to take it away, they came back and said, "Yes, please", so Glendale are happy to get involved in it. Is there going to be TV problems? Yes, there's going to be TV problems, it's going to be the first year we try it, we don't have a low number of, uh, people probably taking part in it the first year, but it needs to be grown. The community are asking for it, whether we like it or not, they're saying they want to go back to some form of Britain in Bloom, they're calling for Britain in Bloom at the moment, so we'll keep it local and work our way up, and hopefully one day, we'll be entering Britain in Bloom. So from that meeting, um, I gave them the presentation, they took the presentation away, um, they've adequately covered, I'm not going to re-cover it, uh, the actions they took from that meeting, uh, the actions they committed to me that they were going to take from that meeting. I then went back onto the press and social media, put it on social media, and said what was going to happen. The responses I got, some were vile, some were abusive, some were fantastic, in that fact, I had a lot of fantastic responses. There is genuine people out there, there's abusive people that will always be abusive, there is vile people on there that will always be violent, some hide behind assumed names and just try to wind up people, some don't, some do it quite openly. So, I'm not a fan of social media, yes, I do use social media, I do look at social media, I do look at the forums, and I do take on board some of the things that I've said that are reported on those forums. It's very labour intensive, we looked at doing something where, uh, the council could monitor the forums and pick up issues, it's too labour intensive to do that, um, so we decided on, because of some of the, majority of, well, the majority of the comments were good, but a minority of the comments on there, a minority of the people, um, just unfortunately ruin it for everybody. Um... Currently, um, as I say, Glendale put into practice, uh, what they said, um, they would do, they've done it, they've put extra resources in, uh, cost, I think I'm going off as twenty-two thousand or something like that, yeah, um, uh, which is their cost, that's what they're doing. Um, the, um, flower beds, um, yes, they were late, um, what I can tell you, um, Paul did confirm in May, we had one delivery, excuse me, we had one delivery of flowers, uh, which was quite a large delivery of flowers, uh, that were not up to scratch, um, so they were sent out. Then came the problem, hold on, everybody's been having the same problem, and they've took a lot of the flowers first, but they sourced the flowers and they started replanting. It did take time, and it did take time to get up and running, um, but, again, we can all put our heads in the sand, but there is issues with weather at the moment. I love it, myself, it's fantastic, that's why I'm the colour I am, I like being outside, but plants don't, as simple as that, especially even when you water them during the day, you notice they're out watering them on the one day, the next day they're dead, um, I reported it the following day. I go back to the report, and I ask members, um, I ask them again and again, we have a duty to report the issues, I know people do report them, um, there was a press release that went out, um, in, uh, June, I think, um, having a criticism, um, about Mayor's portfolio, the Cabinet, et cetera, et cetera, not up to scratch, not doing the job, et cetera. I answered that, I was asked for a quote and I answered that, and quite frankly, uh, the person that wrote it, um, had only, at that stage, at that stage, reported two issues, but, to be fair to the individual, it's now reported the most. And to be fair to councillors, after that press release, it did do some good, even though it was a negative, it did turn into a positive. Look at the amount of complaints we've got from councillors, that wasn't happening, it is now, and I can, all I can do is thank councillors for that, but there also should be a duty on our offices, wherever they are within this borough, to report issues, they don't always do it, they should be reporting them through the same mechanism. On the, um, the community, um, part of it, I'm hoping, um, looking at Philip and Paul, that we'll have a contact number and contact details early next week, which will go online and will go, uh, out to the public to see what, um, uh, opportunities are out there to work with community groups and members of the public, and that will go out early, hopefully early next week. Um, on the response to that, we need to have them back and have the forms back by November, uh, so I would suggest probably by the end of October, so Paul, uh, and his team have the opportunity to order the plants. So everything will become clearer, and there will be a number of press releases going out to business, going out to community groups, and going out to members of the public, uh, and schools. It's important we get the schools working with our complexes to actually, for an education purpose, and for, so, uh, people in our complexes, uh, feel some ownership, um, for, uh, the gardening areas that we've got all around that, and some community pride back into, uh, these projects. So I think, uh, boroughing Bloom is an excellent idea, I know the Cabinet and my side of the council, uh, think the same, and it's a project that I want to move forward, and I hope, um, the opposition will listen to what the public are saying, and listen to what we're saying, and move forward with us as one team.
Questions to councillor Lloyd.
May I just correct for a reserve right to question, um, you may want to just have a chat with the, kind of, central services, who I assume IT department is under, because unfortunately, if he sent an email out to all councillors, that wouldn't have been received by new members, because we were not added enough data to the distribution lists until as latest two to three weeks ago. So had he simply emailed councillors@ or whatever the version is, or Conservative@, that would not have been received by new members, and that would be why myself and my colleague not have received that, rather than as was tried to be painted, uh, a lack of that, so, you know, he may not have been aware of that fact at the time, um, but that will probably show why, rather than a lack of interest from members, there was a certainty in his speech.
Maybe somebody should have told me.
Uh, we reported it multiple times at the time.
Just for you guys, maybe somebody should have told me.
I'm assuming it's been sorted there.
Not actually still correct, I mean councillor Trammans is still missing off a few lists, but, yeah, it would move, ninety-nine percent of it.
Councillor Smith came back to you.
He's returning.
Councillor Lawson.
Uh, thank you, Chair, I mean, I'll discuss that with Phil afterwards, because it was a legitimate issue, it was causing me issues as the leader of the opposition in trying to sort things out, so it was a genuine issue. Um, in terms of the action panel, everyone's calling, which is on, on page four, um, given an, uh, an update on where things are from your perspective as portfolio holder, um, it says that a, a working group with MBBC officers is suggested, has that taken place? Or has that been set up, and have you had any ideas about how members will be involved in that moving forward?
Yeah, um, the working group, uh, has been organised, has been set up by officers of, can get me wrong, get me right here, there's Communities Group, um, Paul's area, IT and Housing, four areas, so, the four officers are co, well, I've got that right?
Economic Development.
Economic Development, sorry, I apologize, five areas, um, which is mirroring the areas that, um, they're going to be dealing with, of course, it is complex, but, um, we need, um, different departments, we'll be contacting different areas, and I'm also mindful of, uh, the workload, um, so by spreading it, and then you spread the workload, so it has happened, and as we'll say, early next week, um, I should have information for you.
And that will be shared with members. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Grant.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, um, councillor Long, for all giving us an update on what's been happening, a lot of it was quite informative and interesting, and I'll start off by saying, um, that I don't recall getting that email, uh, because I know that if I did, I would have seen it and be, uh, quite confused about sending some emails, it could be my mistake, I could have got it, but I don't recall receiving it, so it might be a wider problem in just, but anyway, um, that's beside the point. I have some suggestions for what I think, um, uh, should be included in the next contract, uh, some of which, uh, quite a lot of which probably wouldn't require any additional spending, it would just be, as you said, um, reorganising priorities. I'm happy to throw these to you and officers and see what can be implemented, because in, in the spirit of the council being over control and, uh, sort of more increased cooperation, I think both sides need to be listened to on this, um, and if we, if we're our criticism coming from our side, then it comes from a good place, it comes from us wanting the best possible deal for our residents, after all, you know, they're the ones who are paying for this service, and we must always remember that and make sure they're getting, uh, you know, a good deal for what they're paying, and they feel like what they're paying the council, to pay Glendale to do, is being done. Uh, another question, well, question and thing that I'd like to find out is, uh, regarding the, um, officer briefing, um, are there any minutes available from that that can be shared with members, will there be an opportunity further down line to involve members of that process? Just because I'm sure that officers are making good sensations, but I think members should be able to do so as well.
I'll just say, um, on, um, you talked about both sides, um, making sure, you know, um, everybody gets input, um, yeah, um, I've got no objection, you're sending, uh, through your ideas to, uh, Philip Richardson, uh, for consideration, you may find because the working party was, um, of all parties, um, that some of those ideas have already been incorporated. I'm not going to speak about the, uh, specification or the contract at this time, um, when it comes to the briefing, uh, if they haven't been included, you can raise them at the, at the briefing meeting. On the officer briefing, what can be made public and what can't be made public, um, I think it would be advisable for, um, a, a public document and a non-public documents, because there's going to be, uh, sensitive information in there that any contractor would love, including the one sat in there, love to get on their hands on before, uh, its competitors, so I want to try and avoid that, and, uh, unfortunately, uh, we do get leaks, uh, from all sides, I'm not blaming any one side, uh, but we do get leaks, and I would rather, um, that, um, any document we're going to put out there is, um, a document that is agreed with the officers, so we don't, um, we don't have problems with contractors, as simple as that. So I've got no problem, you've put your information forward, um, and we'll look at it.
Councillor Gattidge.
Thank you. Councillor Lloyd, um, have you got a list of areas that you're looking to get sponsored?
No. I'm open minded.
You, you said you were on about roundabouts or park land or?
Nothing.
So you haven't thought about, you know, there's no?
Yeah, I've thought about it, just to answer your question, it's quite a simple question. We're open to anything. Um, we have looked at areas, we've looked at places like Georgialett Gardens, we've looked at the town centre, Bedworth Town Centre, um, we've looked, we're not, well, I said to you, I, I wouldn't advise that we, at this stage, that we do our main destination parks. I think, uh, we need to continue doing that. But all of ours, including the front of the town, as far as I'm concerned, if somebody wants to come forward and sponsor it, or somebody wants to come forward and do it, then great.
Can, can I come back? I fully support the wildflower meadows. I travel a lot and I see a lot of beautiful flower meadows, So We Call for instance. And they are sponsored, and there's a little board with it, ever sponsored it, whichever company it, and I think that is a very good idea to look to go along that way. And hopefully we could get, if the department can get a, a list of where they can sponsor, then we can go out to the general public or the businesses and see what they can offer. I know many years ago father was at Bedworth and he sponsored various things, even build a site.
Just, uh, you know, he's interested in the auction so near, because I work at Castle Cottage, looks where you got your idea from.
Oh, right. I don't know.
Because the Spitfire Island and all that down there is absolutely fantastic. It isn't now.
No, because they've gone home.
Because it's receding.
Yeah.
It is.
But it's an extraordinary season and, you know, you don't water the plants in the day, you water it at night because you're scorching. And hopefully, you know, they'll last a bit longer in, in other summers, but this summer's been quite like seventy-six, yeah. And, um.
Councillor Sargent. Um, I just wanna support the idea of the wildflowers, uh, and the question roundabouts. I've seen that on many occasions, with the truck drivers travelling for many miles around the city, you know, all over. It looks better, it's attracting wildlife and obviously it's a lot cheaper from what people are saying. Um, the other thing was is the, uh, if somebody wants to, in a, in a, in a housing complex, one of the, you know, borough complexes wants to take over a section of garden and, um, you know, grow some flowers there, is that something?
Can I say, uh, I've had experience of this. If you go, if you go round our, our complexes, certainly some of the back gardens, there's little bits that have been maintained, there's little bits, and other little bits that have been maintained and it gets overgrown, uh, unfortunately, um, people pass away or people, get disabilities as they get older. Uh, we all get older, it's gonna affect us all, so you're not able to do it. And it looks sad. Um, so what I'm suggesting, um, is that we take it one inch and we involve the very young, uh, i.e. the school age, and, um, the elderly, elderly people at the complexes, join them together, let the complexes pick, uh, with the kids, the type of floral design they want. If it's wildflower, which would be in a lot of these gardens, would be, you know, a fantastic thing, because it's low maintenance, so you don't have kids having to maintain it. It's, uh, pretty and it gives choice, so you can have a number of different, um, types of seed. Um, so the idea is, is to link, uh, local schools maybe with complexes, or if the complex just wants to go on its own and can't find the, we can't find the local school to match up with them, uh, because it gives opportunities to both. It gives, um, diversity opportunities and, uh, or issues about the bees and the flies and everything that the kids can do. And it looks pretty, uh, for the people in the elderly complexes. So it's about choice, giving them a choice.
I have been speaking to some people in a, one of the borough complexes that want to take the truckery out and put wildflowers or flowers in.
Anybody else in the panel or competition?
I'd just for Corrigan, I'll ask a question in fairness Chair, with point of clarification.
What's your point of clarification?
No, the, no, the previous was a point of clarification. I did, I, I had your question for the, for the article I've made.
I got him.
Thank you Chair. I think that, it's very welcome to have a briefing, I think just hopefully in the next month or so, to put on specification finishing, et cetera, which is, which is great. One of the points I think you raised was obviously, I still maintain pink papers and as necessary absolutely, but to have as much information available to members as possible. Thing, and it doesn't have to be necessary, the what we're willing to pay or not pay, et cetera. But if you're providing a tender to companies and saying, this is what we want you to do, I don't see why that couldn't be provided to councils as well. I appreciate your point about leaks, et cetera. Well, if there was something on that, I'm sure I would have no objection to, um, there are ways around that, you know, having copies distributed to members in the meeting only and then returned afterwards. I, I just, I think as much information as we can see to help shape these ideas, so we can actually get an early understanding of actually, what are we going to say? And, and I accept there can be times when the public have different question of what is expected and what's not. For example, Glendale said earlier that the cemeteries are a, um, I can't remember the official term, but the cut and not collect. Well, that was the first I knew about that as a, as a councillor. And I think it's really important that actually people know what to expect, because that may alleviate some of the complaints coming down the line. Um, if people simply know what it is they expect, I think there are ways that we can work around those confidentiality and secrecy issues, um, and fully accept those. Um, but I think that, that, that shouldn't be the block of default position of no, but actually looking at, okay, how can we make it a yes?
I think as councillors, we all have, uh, no matter what political spectrum you are, we all have problems with the community's expectations. Uh, expectations get raised at times and then dashed when the money runs out. Um, so I, I understand fully. Um, what I, what I think, my view really is to give members all information. So I think members of this council should have every bit of information in that contract when we come to, um, the, um, the presentation, so you know, you know what's being presented. And it shouldn't be just, um, a precis of it. Um, so all the information should be there, so we know what we're discussing. Yeah, the members' meeting will be a closed meeting, yeah, and quite rightly it should be at that stage. Then I think what we need to do is come up with, um, for starters, I, I'm, I'm not sure, but I'm gonna look at Philip and he'll correct me if I'm wrong, but once the specification goes out, then I should imagine it's in the public domain. At that stage.
Certainly a tender return time, I would try. I, I suspect that because it's, um, it will be done in a secure tendering environment, that in fact it will only be disclosed to tenders at that stage. But at the point of tender return, that's when it will become a.
Okay, so there is a point that it can all be made public, but I'm sure, um, that a shortened version of that, which takes out the sensitive information, can be made public, um, through our website, uh, through the media, et cetera, et cetera, try and, I don't know, I've got no problem with that, so I suppose I've got no problems with that. But I wouldn't want to put sensitive information in there.
Councillor Poff.
You partly answered my point talking to councillor Sargent, but I was gonna ask about bringing community groups in to do basic functions, it's quite a good idea. But how much would the whole setup push on that? Because it's, because I don't look at community groups, people whose interests are in the way, what safety are you trying to have?
Safeguards is if, um, community groups don't do it, we do. Um, the, the, uh, as simple as that, the, the budget is there for next year. I don't, um, suggest at this stage actually cutting the budget, because, um, I think that'd be silly. Um, I think what we should do is, um, see how it goes. And if we get a lift that two people come in, and there will be budget savings, because a lot of the cost is the manual side of it. Um, so there will be budget savings on each bed, um, that the public take over. Um, but some of that budget will be put back in to a system, so we're not asking them to do it for nothing, we're not asking them to buy the flowers. Um, we're saying, we'll buy the flowers, we'll put a sum of money in, uh, to purchase those flowers, we're not asking them to do that. Um, and they can, uh, design, for example, with floral rooms that are interested, you know, um, now, they could probably come up with some quite spectacular, um, they're professional people, they're all over there, something spectacular. Um, so it's about that. Is it all thought out all the way through? No, we don't. Um, you know, we're learning as we go. Um, but the safeguard is, the money's there, we leave the money there and then if it fails, at least we've got the money to put the flowers in at this time. But what we would like, like to know, obviously, is by October, uh, for ordering flowers, obviously we have to order them, you know, in advance, we need to know, um, how many groups or where those groups, what flower beds, et cetera, are interested. So the cut, the first cutoff is gonna be, I think, October, uh, end of October. So we're gonna have to move quite sharply, uh, to get this in. So pace is an issue, we'd go the move quite, quite fast. But that's the safeguard. Then the following year, if you made savings on that year, if you take those savings, money's still there for that year and you do it again. Um, so you're taking your savings out a year hence, rather than, um, at the time. So the money should always be there in case it falls.
Councillor Bollman.
Uh, Chairman, I mean, I, I have had considerable experience over the last six years organising a community library. Uh, this is people who don't get paid, who provide a service to the public and so on. The one thing you can't do is mix people who are paid with people who are not paid. Because the first thing a volunteer looks at if he sees someone or she sees someone standing next to them doing the same work, first for a wage, is walk away. They don't stay. And the first question I've been asked when you announced your proposed initiative for taking over flower beds, for example in Balkington, is who's gonna do it? Because you can't get volunteers doing one flower bed while another flower bed, sponsored by companies or whatever, is being provided by Glendale or the, the contractor. And sort of volunteer is standing there sweating, especially in this particular, and doesn't get, I presume, the watering service, doesn't get the support, doesn't, you know, it, it's not the same. And my idea would be, instead of you looking for savings, you look for the satisfaction of a community carrying out the work paid, but with that local control in there, which make, means that the quality is better than can be provided by Glendale or other people. You're always looking, so as much from pressure from yourself to do it for less. And when you do it for less, you get less in the end, don't you? And the quality of the flower beds this year have been poor. I'm sorry about that, the same as, same as Glendale or anyone else would be. And I do put it down to the weather and the extreme difficulty of maintaining a flower bed at a time when you're getting record high levels of temperature. But I do think, if, if you take them, if you look at introducing community groups, saving money and then retrospectively taking the money out of the contract, I just don't think that's gonna work. Volunteers will not stay and work alongside people who are paid. And it, it is almost as simple as that. I've seen, I've seen groups in Balkington Village Centre, volunteers in there slowly drift away and not, not take an interest. For six years I've maintained forty to fifty volunteers in the community library, self-financed, fundraised and everything else, and it works wonderfully well. Why? Because nobody's getting paid. They're all volunteers and they're all committed to the project. It's totally different from what's been proposed here. It's so difficult to get that mix of volunteers and paid staff working side by side and sustain the effort over years, because this is for years. This is, this is a permanent change you're talking about, where flower beds are taken over by volunteers. And you've illustrated the point with some of the complexes where circumstances change, the voluntary effort falls away and you're left with almost nothing, instead of a reasonable flower bed.
Councillor.
Yeah, I disagree with you, um, it's quite simple as that. Totally disagree with you. Um, at the end of the day, and I, I should say, funny enough, one, one of the individuals that has approached me, one of the groups that has approached me is from Balkington.
Yeah.
Right? Um, but I strongly disagree with what you're saying, because quite simply, um, there is no, there is a fallback position. Um, it's not, as I said, not gonna lose the money, the money has been left in the contract, uh, for the, obviously the start-up, over the start-up period and, uh, for future years. It's been left in the contract the first year, um, because the savings then come on the second year. So what basically is, so if that, if that flower bed costs four thousand pounds to do and you put two thousand five hundred pounds in there for the community group to purchase the flowers, et cetera, you have two thousand pounds in there for, uh, the community group to, uh, do that flower bed and plant that flower bed, you've got two thousand pounds left over. So they do that bed, then the following year you've got two thousand pounds plus your budget for that year. If you've got somebody to do that bed again, yeah, you've got two thousand pounds savings and you repeat the thing at the same budget. So those individuals get the opportunity to do it again and obviously then the following year, the following year, so the budget money you're working at your hands all the time, so the money's there. So if it fails, then the money's there to do that bed, right? The council does it. Um, working next to paid people, I hear what you're saying, but if you go back to the beginning of my briefing, um, or the, yeah, my, uh, presentation, I did say, uh, there'll be five groups, education, the, um, obvious complexes, business, local community group, what was the other, I've forgotten. Like, but you get the idea. And there was a number, oh, business. Um, there was a, a, a number of groups there. So what you do, instead of, uh, having, um, a competition or just a sponsorship thing, so anybody that sponsors a flower bed, anybody that sponsors a roundabout, a grass fridge, whatever it is they sponsor, and they have their plaque for advertisement there, um, that is one com- one competition. I'm not talking mega, but it might be just a plaque. So at the end, in, um, end of August, um, I think it's mid-August actually, when we used to judge, uh, things, the judge goes round, looks at all the sponsorship ones and says, that's the best one, that's the best second best, that's the best way of it, yeah? That's the idea. Same with the community groups, they'll have one, it'll be completely separate, same with the complexes and the education. Uh, we may have to do it obviously differently for that, because we're talking children, we don't want any children to be, uh, upset because they didn't win, so we may have to look at that differently. But that's the idea, it's about developing community ownership and getting them involved within their communities and actually developing the flower beds. As I said, destination parks, I'm not gonna touch, not at this stage, don't think they should, um, because it is a guinea pig and it's a plaque. And, you know, it may fall flat on its face, but the money will be there to cover the beds, because we've already said how we're gonna do that. So I don't agree with you, I think, um, community groups, from what I hear, um, from the people that have talked to me, I've had one lady come up to me, uh, lives very local to me, never spoke to me before, I don't know, I know if I pass them up the street and that's it, when can we get involved? You know, I've had other people come up to me and say, it's coming, wait, please. So let's give it a try, let's give it a chance. If it fails, it fails. Um, and we'll move on, carry on with what we're doing, but we need to try it.
Councillor.
Chair, can I just ask, if we go past the questioning stage, because I've just, I've comments I wanted to make, that was all I've been waiting for questions to be completed.
Well, we'll have to try and, we'll have to try and bring it up somehow, Councillor, so we've got something, something too hard.
All right. Can I get a drink of water if I'm, no more questions, is that? I won't be asking any of those. Chair, can I start by saying I found this, um, exercise today to be one of the better ones that we've done, uh, within scr- overview and scrutiny of, of recent times. Um, and, and I think it's been, um, re- really useful.
But I also fully understand that it's difficult for members not to comment without giving examples probably within their own parochial area. Because I'm sure all of us in all of our own wards know some of the problems it could have been. So it's difficult to speak without giving examples. But what we've done today, I think we've done a decent job of overview and scrutiny. But we also need to make, well, we don't make decisions, but we need to make a decision in what we're going to recommend to the cabinet. And whilst most of what we've spoken about are things that are perhaps currently happening or have already happened, we need to look to the future, quite rightly, and see how things can be improved. And I hope Glendale, the current contractors, will listen to some of the things that have been said and make those adjustments necessary for those improvements of the public thing. One of the things that often gets me, and it's not just this subject, it's often the small things that people take notice of. And in this particular instance, if I give the example of the backup thing. And by the backup, I mean you've had the gang mowing your house or whoever's done it, the people mowing. But then all the stuff is left around, the signposts and stuff, where they should be doing a backup with a strimmer and that. And that's when it really stands out because the main job's been done, but it looks untidy because of the other little bits. And it's really important to do that. I actually worked for two seasons somewhere else doing this work. And we actually operated in what appears to be a slightly different way inasmuch as we would do all the mowing and stuff and hedge cutting and whatever. But we also had the equipment on our trucks to do the backup while we were there. The only other time that we followed them all year round was when there were large areas that had been gang mowed and then you'd have a gang that followed up to do the backup because of a local tractor and a gang mower, as it got there. So I think, you know, there's tweaks like that to be made. I guess in Glendale's favour this year as well, because of how the weather's been, there's not been a lot of mowing to be done in recent weeks. So there's been a chance to catch up on other things. And I've noticed that. I have actually noticed how other things have been caught up with and improved. It may be that we get a massive downpour of rain and everything that's brown is suddenly going to be three or four inches high again. So they'll be chasing, chasing that again. It's been mentioned about community involvement and I think that's really important. If I shine a light on one of the parts in my area, and as I was saying, it's difficult not to do things as not parochial. But Bailey Park in Beadwood at Marston Lane is a real example of how improvements have been made and monitored because we've got a proactive residents' association in Collycroft. And they're really involved in that and I know how they, you know, soon chase things up if they've not been done. And it's something that we, I'm not aware of in this borough, but, and I think councillor Lloyd has touched on it. Things where we could actively promote involvement are things like Friends of a Park. It could be any park in the borough where there's local residents that are keen to, well, they are keen to keep it, things tidy and attractive. Is to try and help them set up Friends of a Park. I'm aware that just across the border at Longford Park, they have an active Friends of a Park there. And it does make a difference. I think there's other things that we can also have a look at as well. And there are things that I would suggest, Chair, that do get put forward to the cabinet. And that's things like how we can adjust on things. Because we have a lot of, a lot of rose beds. And rose beds are lovely, but sometimes they're in places now where they're difficult to maintain and they're probably not the best thing to have. And there's some slight financial saving by possibly removing those ones. Not ones where people don't want them to be gone, but where they're not serving any meaningful purpose. Again, there's areas with large parts of shrubbery. And they tend in the main chair to be areas where they've been planted up in the past to prevent ball games. But they've got a bit overgrown, they're too large, they haven't been taken out and replanted. And I think there's some areas that can actually have, not all of them, I think you can still prevent that ball game situation where it's needed. But there's, but there's large parts of it could be removed and turfed over for ease of maintenance. We also have to be aware, Chair, that not all of the problems that are highlighted are the responsibility of this council or Glendale. Very often it'll be overgrown footpaths, which the county have probably got responsibility for. And it's, but it's not always the county's fault inasmuch as, there's landowners as well that allow their hedgerows and things to become overgrown. It essentially adds a problem on the highway. We also have other landowners that do it. We currently maintain some areas because of traditional reasons, the bits of land that don't belong to us. And maybe the cabinet should be reviewing those areas. I don't know whether it's much of a problem now, but it was at one time where we had, I've forgotten the wording for it, but housing estates that were open plan estates. It became a problem because people under right to buy would maybe buy their house, next door didn't, it was still a council property. But because of easiness, it was easier just to cut all of it. But you've got to bear in mind, you're putting some of these private areas and perhaps there should, you know, should be an adjustment to that. I also have to say, in parts where there's been particular problems, there has been positive responses. And I can, I can just mention two areas, just quite rightly is mentioned about the sensitivity of cemeteries. And if I talk about Country Road Cemetery, there are people that drive into the cemetery to park up in the cemetery to either go shopping, go to the church or go to work. And it's been a bugbear of mine because of the damage caused in that cemetery. And I have to say, after a period of time, it's, there's been some restrictions put in, some trip rules, for want of a better word, and some bollards. There's still problems around the area behind the police station, the cemetery. And if I'm honest, Chair, you know who uses that a lot? The people that work in the police station. All Saints Square, we had a massive problem. All Saints Square was only probably planted up with bedding about three weeks ago. It was very late, very, very late in the bedding season. And I've got to say that it was extremely poor. But once I chased it, it was recognised, it was inspected and it was recognised. It was poor quality and I, I can't fault the response inasmuch as it was dealt with and now it's looking okay. Obviously there's the problem of watering, being able to do that. But we are where we are with it. It's always in these sort of jobs, it's a juggling exercise at this time of year. It doesn't make it right because I think it swings around about. Sometimes the contractor will have a relatively moderate year and don't need so many staff. In a year when you've got some exceptional weather patterns, either way, you probably need more. And you need that ability to bring people in and properly train and equipment, even if they're agency staff. I had an issue going through the park once where there was a guy there, I'm going to say it, I think you're aware of it. He had no P P E on, personal protective equipment, he had nothing on, operating a mower, you know, with people, the public around him. But I believe that's been resolved and that all operatives have given the proper equipment at the start. I like the idea of the public access to the spec once it's agreed. And, you know, how often things are going to be done, when they're done. Again, you'll never get it right because if it's done on a two or three week cycle, summer grows a bit quicker than that and they've got all the three weeks. But I think a lot of people actually genuinely understand, providing they've got that detail and that information. And they don't mind waiting another week, providing they know it's going to get done. There's always going to be situations where a contractor or the council has got to be reactive. There's always that. That's what, you started with. We had our list of places to go and deal with. But inevitably, at some point in the day, you get a phone call or can you nip around so-and-so and sort that out? Or even going to extreme, there'd be a dead dog in the morning, you know, and it's quite like that, it's reactive like that. I'm really keen on getting this interaction between not just members of the public and doing the bedding and stuff. But councillor Lloyd's touched on it. And I've, I've put down interaction between students and particularly sheltered accommodation. And my students have been any person of school age, whether they'd be junior school or senior school or whatever. And a fantastic example, Chair, was last year when I was mayor, going to, in fact, we went two or three times. I can't remember the name of it. It is in Camper, it's a sheltered place. I think we actually tried it one time, or Camden. Anyway, but they've done a fantastic scheme there where the young people came in and designed a sensory garden in the yard for them. And you know what? It wasn't just that, they'd done that, they completed that, but that interaction continued. And those students carried on going in and had a great time listening to the, the older people relating their stories and listening to the young people relating theirs. And the odd guitar got played as well and things like that. It was fantastic. So there's a lot, I think there is lots of opportunity to be there, to do those things. Yes, you've got considerations always around health and safety and safeguarding and whatever, but there are things that are overpriced. So if I, if I'm suggesting things to go to Cabinet, it's that type of thing is encouraging that interaction, Chair. The review of responsibilities that other people should be having for their land. It isn't to say that we couldn't continue doing that work, but maybe they should be paying us for it. You know, those days have sort of gone by. Encouraging to think people like the Friends of the Park and the community involvement again, and that public access to the specification. So I'm hoping, Chair, that you'll accept them as friendly things to put forward to Cabinet from this meeting. Counselor Wilson?
Thank you, Chair. My councillor Hancock, I think this has been a very useful exercise. It's been a very interesting deep dive actually into a particular service provision of the council and seeing what goes on, learning from mistakes, moving forward and like that. But I am conscious that we do need, and I think councillor Hancock has also alluded to this, having some tangible results from what we've done tonight. Because I'm sure in this weather, we'd all hope to be doing something different. But we want to have an outcome for the residents. So bearing in mind what I've heard, I'm happy for some of the things that councillor Hancock's has put forward and I would second them to go forward to Cabinet. I have a number of recommendations based on what has been said tonight that I'd like to put forward. Firstly, a summary of the new grounds maintenance tender be provided to the next meeting of the internal OSP for debating discussion, if necessary, on paper. So that we can, not the actual reams and reams of what the tender is, because no one's going to sit there and do that. That's your job, that's what we pay you for. But if you can provide us with a summary, because the Cabinet report was silent on a lot of things that were actually going into the new tender. It says what's in the old tender, not in the new one. So I think that would be interesting for us to have a debate and discussion on. I think it would also be useful for the monthly performance report provided to the portfolio holder to be distributed to all elected members, so we can see what's going on. I know that officers have offered that to the shadow portfolio holder. But I think actually, like we get with the performance report on the car parking and off-street car parking and how that goes, it would be useful to see that information moving forward. Thirdly, once the new tender is in place, a dedicated page on the council website be established to detail the specific contract specifications. That's designed so it encompasses what councillor Hancock was saying, so that residents have a go-to point to see what there is, but also with a particular easy accessible section on the requirements for cemeteries, whether that be a sub-page or whatever, because that has been a particularly emotive subject. And I think having a dedicated subsection which details cemeteries would be useful for residents to know what is going on. I know that's an issue that I've had contact with yourself over Phil. And it is about, I think it's quite key actually, about managing residents' expectations. And finally, Chair, an update on the proposals on the Glendale report at page four and the officer working party be provided to this OSP in six months' time. I think it would be useful to see how that's progressing. That may tie in with when Glendale are next due. I'm not sure, I can't remember the exact details of the working programme. I think that might just about tie in. But councillor Lloyd has given an undertaking that we would have an update. That might be useful to incorporate it into our work programme. And if it so happens to tie in with when you're here, so much the better, so that we can actually see how that's working in practice. But I think those are four tangible things that we could take forward, Chair, which would be a positive step in the right direction.
I have no objection to anything that's been suggested. The panel are quite happy with that. On the assumption that Glendale and Paul and the portfolio holder have inherited the concerns and whatever there is about the contract and how it should work better in the future, I don't have a problem. Second to that, I've answered the proposal lies. Everybody in favour of that? Thank you. And the suggestion is that the next panel will, the people get pink papers on the contract photo. Anyway, if that's agreeable by the panel, we can do that. And put it on pink papers because it is, as we said before, there's commercial confidentiality about this as well. So don't, don't let them think that everything should be open and put the card because we're on cameras. And saying that, I would like to thank everybody for attending tonight. I'd like to thank the portfolio holder and the panel. And I'd like to thank Glendale and all.
Chair, can I just check that we've got a consensus around both councillor Hancock and?
Yes.
That's, that's, right, it's okay.
It's all together.
I was quite happy for that.
It was all together as far as I was concerned. And I would say I'd like to thank Glendale, Glendale as well. There was a bit of kicking tonight, which I was expecting, but at the same time, there was some good comments come back. And they turned around and said, some work you have done really effectively and corrected. So don't, so don't take it that we're all hate Glendale. It's just, it's just the fact is, is that it's what it is. And I think people got a good shake tonight. One wins the other. And I thank everybody for their attendance. Thank you everyone.